...five o'clock, please silence the phones. And let the bleachers and blue flag in here will move to the outside.
The bleachers are a part of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation and one individual with liberty and justice for all.
Hi, so I have a motion to an off the agenda.
I am in the off the agenda. With the amendment of the good amendment by the Trump, removal of an item three public comment period as the public comment period actually should be under hold business. So please go ahead.
Please take a second for a favor.
Hi.
Hi.
Before we start, I have the hearing procedure here. The public hearing on what is the judicial land use application is scheduled for tonight. Oregon law requires that I make several announcements for this hearing. The staff report has been prepared for the application and the staff report was available seven days before tonight's hearing. The staff report identifies the approval criteria that apply to the applicant's proposed development and analysis of this proposed criteria. A copy of the rules of the procedure for the hearing, the agenda for tonight's hearing, and copies of the staff report are available at entrance in the back of the room. All those in attendance are asked to sign the attendance sheet. Please include your address. Testimony and evidence from all concerned shall be specific to the applicable criteria and standards. Testimony also should be repetitive. Repetitious. Please do not repeat testimony offered by yourself or earlier witnesses. Also, please refrain from demonstrating such applause, cheering, or other disruptions which are prohibited. Any person wishing a continuance to present additional evidence or testimony or to keep the record open to respond to new evidence must make this request before the public testimony portion of the hearing is closed. If the council makes a decision you disagree with, any issues you want to raise on an appeal has to have been raised for the council's consideration. Failure to have raised an issue on the record with sufficient specificity accom- accompanied accompanied by statement of evidence sufficient have afforded the council and the parties to this proceeding to respond to that issue will prelude appeal on that issue of the land use boards of appeals. Failure to have and to base constitutional or other issues related to proposed decisions of approval with sufficient specificity to allow council to respond to issue preludes in action for damages from certain court. All persons testifying at this hearing must recognize by the chair approach the podium state your name and address. We will now open the record for Lakeview file number 739, a request for plan zone map amendments from residential to multifamily residential property located at 207 North L. I will ask council members to disclose any party contacts, conflicts of interest, bias, or any other statements to declare as any town council visit the site.
I've driven by it.
Yeah, I think the volunteer.
You mean like attended when it was open?
No, after. Have they done to have contact with any of these people? I've talked to several of them.
Yeah, a number of people have talked to me, but nothing outside of what was shared in the meeting that happened here with the town council.
Okay?
Council?
Yes.
You need to speak up.
Okay, alright. The procedure will follow for this hearing set out by state law and the Lakeview Development Code is as follows. Oh, I'm sorry. Does anyone in the audience wish to question any of the council members about being this podium?
I'm having a difficult time hearing. I'm assuming where this is telling her Garba.
Alright, it'll take five minutes. The procedure we will follow for this hearing set out by the state law and the Lakeview Development Code is as follows.
What, excuse me, I think you were asking about ex parte contact.
About what?
Ex parte contact and if anyone had any questions.
I already asked that.
But I don't think that Mrs. McGarva heard.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, and I apologize, we couldn't hear clearly, so I didn't want to interrupt you and I distinctly apologize that we're not missing person. I know this is awkward, but we had a COVID positive in our intermediate contact. So as far as ex parte contact, I didn't hear anybody declaring.
So I definitely have a couple of people have talked, I've talked to you guys as well, so the applicant as well as others prior to the application and also since the June meeting, but nothing new that, again, most of those were given in the record. Nothing, nothing.
Okay.
That would prohibit me from making a decision according to what's.
Okay, so specifically, Darwin, what I'm concerned about is I watched the commissioners meeting and I have a copy of that transcript. You didn't feel that anything in that meeting, I think your words were, it put you in a tough spot. And my concern is that the tremendous amount of misinformation that was in that meeting. And there was no one there to counter or correct it because no one in favor of the project was notified it was occurring. I'm wondering if that's compromised your objectivity.
Okay, good question, but you guys were in the room, during the meeting, everybody was aware of the meeting. I'm not talking about the planning commission, I'm talking about the meeting that the town council, I am, where we rescinded this back to the planning commission.
No, I'm talking about the more recent commission of this meeting. Were you serving your role as the land sale manager?
Yep, so that meeting, I gave, you know, information to the board of commissioners, but that has nothing to, that property is not part of this application, so it really doesn't.
I agree. I agree, but it then qualifies as ex parte communication, particularly the comment that you made in that meeting regarding the tough spot that it puts you in.
To comment any further is why I made that comment. And so I.
Okay.
At that point, I left it up to the board of commissioners to make the decision.
I just want to make sure that you didn't feel threatened by some of the references of the opposition stating that they were here in me.
I don't remember that statement.
It's in the transcript, which I'll submit.
That I said those words or who said those words?
No, 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 that the opposition. I'm wondering if you felt threatened, similar to how the planning commission felt threatened.
Well, I'm, for one of the land use planners, so I don't feel threatened at all. My decision will be based on the law, and so I.
And you, great, okay. Thank you, Darwin.
Absolutely.
And then, can you see it?
There it is.
We're on our phone. Okay, hi, this is Nikki and I'm not sure since June, okay, sorry, I don't even know what month it is right now, that I've had any conversations, but for sure have had conversations with those who spoke publicly at the, right in August or May, I believe. I don't forget to attend to the lot, yeah, lots of them, I was not asked, so I shouldn't be supposed to for sure, but had conversations with them, reiterated what was covered in this report.
Okay, thank you. So as far as ex parte communication, it's generally conversations, but it can extend to social media. And one of my concerns following this from a distance is that there was a lot of social media activity around the commissioner's decision to rescind the development of that adjacent property. And again, it leaves light that comment.
Who like that?
I did.
Yes.
Not even sure.
Okay. Well, all the, I wouldn't be putting enough of it, I brought my, so that's why I thought, just for the record, those things need to be brought out. So nobody in a position to repeat themselves?
No, I don't think it changed, I'm not sure specifically what you're discussing. I'm not alive in those school, like everything people, sorry.
Right.
It does significantly come to mind, so I'm not. Talking about, to be honest, it's.
Okay, but you feeling partial in particular to it?
Pardon?
You feeling partial in particular to it?
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, just for the record, it wasn't me who liked the comment. My wife appears to love the comment. No, she's. Just a little bit.
Do you have any contact?
No, I just driven by the property and area.
Okay, I've had contact, Sonia came into Shell's office and I was in there. And she had concerns about the building. So that will come up at a later date. But right now, this is just on the, on the zone change.
Thank you.
Okay. Now, the procedure we will follow for this hearing set out by state law and the Lakeview Development Code is as follows. Let me remind everybody, this is only on rezoning and that's it. We're not going to sit here all night and bicker back and forth over the building or anything else. It's just on the zone change. I just want to make that clear. Alright, each item will begin with the applicant who has the burden of proof and his or her representative will make an introductory statement including testimony as to why the proposal or other relief should be granted. The applicant or representative will be allowed up to 20 minutes. So.
So are you ready? No, they're still going through the procedure.
Okay. The town planner and the town attorney and any other state, town, state, county, or federally comments will be presented. All written correspondence will be entered into the record. Persons who are present and support the application will be heard next. Individuals will be allowed up to three minutes. Correspondents in support of the application will be entered into the record. Persons who are present and who oppose the application will then be heard. Individuals will be allowed up to three minutes. Correspondents in opposition to the application will be entered into the record. The applicant is given the final approval, at which time the public hearing will close. Members of the council and town attorney may address questions to the applicant or opponent to assist at arriving decision. The council will make a decision or continue its deliberation to another time and place. Okay, so now moving to applicants or the representatives.
We'll let Ross give a talk here and then I'll something in through him. So Ross, why don't you go ahead and make a presentation?
Alright, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, thank you, Mayor, I appreciate you going through that and stressing that this is what's on change. I just wanted to say, repeat thanks to Kelly and I moved our family to Lakeview over 20 years ago and invested the most productive years of our lives in this community. We worked in the assessor's office, Kelly carried your mail, you've been at the post office. I oversaw the building of Six Holmes as a Lake County building official. Kelly delivered your FedEx packages. We bought hard to keep the Indian school. We served on the Lake, or I served on the Lakeview SWC for. So I was struggling to clean, clean tie, getting the VVD, so there's a few of the things that we did all over there. And about 15 years ago, or actually 15 years ago, we quit our public company jobs. We bought a stinking rundown, eyesore business in the middle of the residential area and turned Lakeview Lockers into what our customers told us was a dry lake. We poured our hearts, spirit, and bodies into that place and bore us out. Not once, now, again, we find ourselves in a stinking rundown, eyesore building in the middle of the residential area. So we want to make it into something that we can be proud of, a blessed community once again. For our efforts, we've been slandered, maligned, and accused of destroying the neighborhood, gate rich off of public property. Our names been spoken more in the last three months than in previous 20 years. Only once has this started, has anyone come to me personally and asked what we're doing. But I'll tell them, tell you how that happened. In December of 2019, I was working out my yard and a pickup storm down my driveway. We live 10 miles out of town. He made a special trip out of there, out there to see me and my house going on, Mr. Pettit. First thing he said, something, he went something like this, "I hear you're going to put a damn homeless shop in the lockers." I asked you weren't in here that, he said, "Well, at the coffee shop they're talking about." And so I had opportunity to explain to him what, what we're doing, what the plan is. He, he left, he wasn't mad anymore, and I have not heard his voice in any of his offices. He lives, he's in that neighborhood. And that's a frustration that I felt is that, well, I'll just keep on the reading because I'll be excited. My point of opinion is this, none of the vocal opposition have bothered to ask the principal parties for facts, but have propagated fear, anger, and misinformation. Now, two things are true, first, we have moved to Texas, but for these reasons, we closer to our grandchildren and to make a living. The lockers building is unoperable and was not an option for us to real. However, we kept our home and we planned to retire in Lakeview. Our friends, some of our family, and our hearts still lie in Lakeview. And second, this application is only for a zone change to multifamily housing to expand housing choice for Lakeview residents. And this part does not include specific development proposal. At the end of the day, these are the facts. Kelly and I own this property. We have applied for a zone change. The zone change application meets all of the statewide planning goals that apply. The zone change application meets all of the town language criteria. We respectfully request that town council approve this application. In support of this request, we have asked for our land use attorney, Jennifer Rager, to provide additional information that supports approval. Thank you.
Thank you, Ross, thank you, Mayor, and council members. My name is Jennifer Brager and I represent the applicant Ross and Kelly McGarva. On behalf of myself. So sorry. On behalf of myself and the McGarvas, I want to thank the town council and staff for coordinating electronic attendance at this meeting during the COVID-19 public health emergency. As city staff has explained in the staff report, the McGarvas applied for a zone change in comprehensive plan amendment to change the zoning of their property located at 207 North L Street, Lakeview. The zone change will adjust the zoning from single-family residential to residential multifamily and add a multifamily sub-district overlaid to the property. As the staff report found, the proposed zone change meets the local land use requirements, statewide planning goals, and comprehensive plan policies. You have before you the application materials, the applicant's and my testimony before the planning commission, as well as further letters submitted by Ross McGarva and myself supporting approval of the proposed zone change. As Mayor Turner explained, the only application before you is a zone change from single-family to multifamily and a related comprehensive plan amendment and application of the multifamily sub-district. Under your code, multifamily housing is defined as housing that provides three or more dwellings on an individual lot, such as a multiplex, apartments, and condominiums. Therefore, the question before you is whether the site can qualify for a multifamily development that could involve any of these or similar options. The only standards that apply are consistency with the statewide planning goals and comprehensive plan, a finding of adequate public facilities, services, and transportation infrastructure, and evidence with change in maneuver. My August 17 letter in pages 7 through 12 answered each of these inquiries. I want to highlight a few of those items. The town has applied multifamily zoning of only 13 acres of land in a more remote part of town within inability to readily connect existing public services and facilities, as well as the transportation system. Further, that part of town has steep slopes making development even more difficult and constrained. It is telling that in the last 20 years between the city's 1999 and 2019 housing needs analysis, not a single property in that existing multifamily zone has been developed. In reality, the need is unmet, not only because the city's own housing needs analysis has shown that multifamily is a necessary piece of the housing mix, but because no multifamily development has occurred over the last 20 years. No other site is available for multifamily housing because no other proposed goals come forward on any other land within the city limits, whether currently zone multifamily or as part of a different request for a zone change. These predict realities reduce housing choice for all members in the community. In contrast, the McGarva property is centrally located within an area already served by adequate sewer and water facilities. The comprehensive plan supports prioritizing development of land micro McGarvas that's already served by utilities and public facilities and services. The transportation system plan identifies that this area is served by adequate capacity by the street system that serves the neighborhood and the town. Both of these conclusions are supported by the town's engineer in the July 21, 2020 Anderson Engineering Letter. In addition, Ross McGarva, an experienced building inspector, has identified in this letter of July 27 all the steps that will be taken in the architectural and engineering activities associated with the ultimate development of the use that will include safe building design and can withstand any perceived flood risk. As the staff reports pointed out, any flood risk is further mitigated by the Bullard Canyon flood control project. The application materials did not include a development proposal. However, the applicants did include an example of one type of housing that could be developed on the site. This example allows for a point of comparison between impacts from the existing single-family zoning and historic use of the property to a multifamily use. Even at a dense and elegant level, the site is adequately served by existing public facilities and transportation infrastructure. Last, there are many legal standards that apply to this application and they are described in detail in my August 17 letter. When one looks to the comprehensive plan policies and the criticisms that have been levied against the zone change, not one of them stands scrutiny when federal and statewide implications are considered, along with the volumes of material provided by the applicant to respond to contentions about perceived concerns related to the property value or current statistics. In addition, the disability of rights, the disability rights of Oregon mentioned another study that similarly, that similar multifamily housing does not adversely affect property values or public safety. And I'll provide a copy of that study here tonight. Further, the comprehensive plan itself calls for zone changes to address and allow for process to meet an unmet need such as multifamily housing to provide a range of housing choices for community members by growing efficiently through redevelopment of property within the town limit, exactly what is proposed here. We want to thank you for your consideration of this information and a fair application of the city code to the legal constraints that have been described in the record. Please approve this application to allow a zone change that will expand housing choice and opportunities for all Lakeview residents. I'm available for questions as well as the McGarvas, and I will also provide closing remarks in response to additional further comments later in the hearing tonight. Thank you.
Okay, the town planner and town attorney and any other town, state, county, or federally chief of government will be presented?
Yes.
Mayor and council members. Let me review the packet that was given to you for preparation for tonight's meeting. And Kelly, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Excellent. So, your package in this order is the August 17 staff report, application number 739, affidavit of mailing to adjacent property owners and interested parties. A hearing notice for this evening's hearing, the town council's July 28 agenda, and the request for tonight's meeting. Written testimony from the applicant's attorney, written comments received for the hearing tonight. There goes on to the town planning commission recommendation, the unedited transcript of the planning commission July 13 hearing, written comments received after town planning commission July 13 hearing, and then the written comments that the council received the week of June 1st. So you'll have all of the written documentation that is submitted to the council and I asked that if you put in there.
Yep, Ms. Mary.
And all the correspondence will be entered into the record?
Thank you. We may cover some of the same material if I already heard the applicant's testimony. Property in question tonight is the previous location of Lakeview Lockers, a commercial service and retail business, leading processing facility that operated from 2040 to 2019. The property was a residential in the 1960s with adoption of the town's first building. This application is a request for a plan and zone map amendment from residential to residential multifamily. The request for residential use converts the non-conforming commercial use located within the residential zone into a multifamily residential use. Multifamily use would further the housing laws and policies of the town coverage of the plan by providing the needed housing type as documented in the town's housing needs analysis. A site plan for development of the property is not part of this application. Development of the property will be the subject of a site design review which will address specific development standards. At the planning commission's July 13 hearing, two issues appeared, the efficacy of water and sewer systems and transportation impacts. Additional information is to get to another through the staff report in the July 22 letter from the town engineer. The information concludes that the capacity of the town's water and sewer facilities will support multifamily use. In fact, the utility impact for multifamily use will be less than what it was when it was. was a new construction facility. It was also determined that the town's decision system is not significantly changing. While property values is not an issue within the land use decision-making process, information is provided that extensive studies have been conducted that conclude that affordable supportive housing does not adversely affect the community's quality. The council's main task now is to determine if the request is in compliance with the comprehensive plan and development code and what relevant facts and findings set by the criteria. Decision criteria are noted in the staff report with relevant facts and findings addressing each criteria. The criteria are used as the basis of the council's decision within the context of state and federal laws regarding discrimination towards personal or housing for protected classes. The town attorney will perhaps share more about this. Some of the criteria may not meet the clear and objective standards required by state law. The council is requested to approve the application as a reasonable accommodation. And again, for the record, some of the written letters received for tonight are agency letters of support from the Department of Housing Authority, the Department of Human Resources, to from the Oregon Health Authority, from the Lake County District, and the Department of Land Conservation.
I'm not going to labor. You guys, I know all the packets and standards. I just wanted to mention specifically that again, as Mary discussed, the decision is about a zone change, and the standards that we have applied to both state and federal laws, Fair Housing Act and the Americans' Disabilities Act require that we treat this zone change, no matter what the use is. So it doesn't matter if it potentially can be public support housing later on, if the analysis is multifamily in general appropriate. So whether it's a quadplex apartment building or the proposed project that's going forward. So that is the standard we need to look at. And again, we need to look at it in a neutral way, regardless of who the end user is. That's a later decision. And again, you can't do it based on who the people are that may be using it, who the distributor is. So at this point, I think you guys have heard all of this quite a bit, but at this point, the decision is whether or not it's appropriate to house in this particular area under our standards. And the staff report indicates there's quite a bit to support that. So that is where we kind of need to look at the analysis that arguments have come in. So that is where things are at at this point. So I think we next need to move to the other agency comments or support issue.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, we're entering the meeting with attachments that we have to bring to the record. Is there a person?
Go ahead. I have a question for propulsion and legal. After leaving, the recommendation voted, and I'm just wondering, there's no supporting findings made towards their decision. I'm just having a hard time accepting that they made that recommendation without supporting the findings. That meeting, you know, it was held in this room, and I feel like you can read the records and audio and at least the transcript of that meeting. And so, you know, reviewing that, I'm just curious, you know, if their decision and their recommendation should be based on findings, why it wasn't? And if they're... So that we actually get a recommendation that's based on evidence that in the records or that they are going to use to their recommendation?
I think part of the issue, what I've heard that I, the hearing went on for quite a long time, and I think it came back to the team. So they did not, the deliberations kind of caught up with myself and kind of flattered my surprise before we'd even, they suddenly put to a vote, and so they did not make findings that their recommendation does not have any weight behind this part of the item view. I would find, Council of the Art, kind of potentially, there might be 120 days to shoot under the order, so I'm giving back to them, I don't, would be somewhat legally problematic, but they did not make findings, so their recommendation cannot be used. I think you got the staff report from both sets.
So 120 days doesn't apply to legislative actions.
Correct.
This is a zone change.
Correct.
120 days doesn't apply in this situation. Quasi judicial hearing would.
Somewhat of note the question about, I agree with you that it's legislative. The applicant, I think, believes that this is quasi judicial, so there is a bit of a...
It's not. I'm not sure what it is. I mean, a zone change is not quasi judicial legislative.
Anyway, that's a side issue. So anyway, that is concerning.
But I don't want to be under, making, you know, an appropriate decision based on the law and based on findings if we're thinking that 120 days is, you know, the reason why we should make a quick maybe decision. Again, my question to the team, if that's what we're called in a long meeting, but if this meeting could go very long, and if we're going to deny this decision, it still should be based on fact. I mean, if this gets appealed either way, it would need to be based on the facts.
Absolutely.
So that's why I'm a little bit turbid, you know, that we didn't get at that meeting, regardless of the team, an actual, because really we're kind of, you know, five zero ones, and now three to two is kind of reversal, which should have been based on findings. I understand testimony, that may be the applicant's reason why they feel it's not, being the decision out of period, it's negative, would be challengeable, but I still wish there was a reason. I think not. Other than the team, there were reasons for the decision.
I don't think it would properly have me to, since you don't like the remains, you like where I do to what their opinion was, everyone agrees that what it is, and if they treated it your job.
I think there's agency, there's agency, it's all agency.
Oh, okay, we have agency here?
Yes.
Okay, please.
Thank you, Mayor Turner. And city council members, my name is Maria Johnson, and I am the district manager for Oregon Department of Human Services for both Plamette and Lake Counties. We provide self-sufficiency and child welfare programs for citizens in Oregon and specifically in Plamette and Lake Counties. I provided you a letter on August 24th, 2020. I have an extra copy if you need them. And I stand before you in full support of the zone change, and I'm available if you have any questions for me.
Anybody have any questions?
Thank you very much. Thank you.
All right. Is there any other agencies? At all? Okay, we'll move on. Persons who are present and support the application will be heard next. Individuals will be allowed up to three minutes. Correspondents in support of the application will be entered into the record.
Are you getting people's support of the application right now?
Yes.
I want to call and be involved right now. So I, you know, my name is Kyle Butler, the former citizen of Lake County for 17 years, known as Ross McGarver for 17 years, and worked there for four years, actually. I'm addressing the council today as a co-chairman, speaking to Ross McGarver's intent and their industry helping the community. I've been a large supporter of the agreement everything they've done. I've seen them support small business, people that are downtrodden in the community. And I fully believe what's going on here is for the best interest of the people being helped in Lake County, in Lakeview. And to make my testimony clear of the fact that they've never had any nefarious or ill dealings in Lakeview, they are stand-up people, they're foster parents, they have a great job, and I just, I fully give them my support as former resident of Lakeview, protecting it. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else?
I'm, no, I need to go ahead of it, 2099 J Street in Lakeview. And will you just stop me if I say something you're not supposed to say? Because I wrote this out before you all, okay? So I just want to discover, it's, there's a lot of emotion that's tied to this, so I just thought that would be easier. So first of all, Lakeview needs more affordable housing, number one. Number two, it is not optimal for the neighborhood or the community to have an unprepared-for empty building on that lot. It devotes the neighborhood. Number three, permanent supportive housing is a solution to number one and number two with the added financial need that the state of Oregon will build it, and it will be an upgrade in the neighborhood. Number four, the idea of the program is to integrate those who are willing to work back into society and give them the help they need. Number five, integration requires that we be willing to include them in our neighborhoods. If we park them far away, they will get the message that they are not wanted, and this does not help their recovery. Number six, there is a saying, you and others, as you would happen, you and you. If you were trying to start over, what would you want? This is not a handout, this is a handouts. Number seven, and there's only nine, so you put it. Much barbed rule is raised by fear at the moment, and trusting that you remember the research that has been done and all the information about the resuming that has been presented, and not react in fear regarding helping those who are truly working at starting a new life. Doing something new is always scary, but doing nothing is much worse. Remember, this is not about, oh, three, this is not about personalities, but about helping our community meet a very present need. Number nine, thank you for your time.
Is there anybody else in support?
I'm Tom Stetson from Disability Rights Oregon. I live in Portland, Oregon, and I was wanting to speak up in favor of the application. I appreciate the council taking time to take a look at this, and I really appreciate the focus on talking about this as a zoning change. It's not a look into whether or not people might be underlying usage or not. It's about this limited question about how a property can be used. And, you know, I think whatever people's feelings are about it, I hope that people recognize that part of the limited government is that it's, you know, not there to scrutinize everything everybody does, you know, just as other people wouldn't want somebody using the zoning process to scrutinize how they run their business or how they use their property. I also appreciate the council's focus on the concerns raised by the decision by the planning department to reverse itself without an opinion. As a disability attorney, one of the things that gives me a lot of concern about is there's an affirmative obligation to make reasonable accommodations to people who have disabilities, and that includes making sure that they have, they have the opportunity to make adjustments to account for any problems that people have identified. And because the planning department didn't say, here's one of the problems that we found with your application, they didn't explain what a neutral basis was for rejecting it, especially since they approved it a month earlier. There wasn't any opportunity for people to talk and find out, how can we make this work for the town? So I'd like to draw special attention to that, you know, particular challenge, you know, because it is specific to the reasonable accommodation process. So I, everything I've heard today says that the property meets the requirements, the neutral requirements under law for multifamily usage, and I encourage the council to approve it. Thank you for your advice.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I thought this was going to be about zoning, not about people that was going to occupy. That's what Ron has addressed, and this guy also.
Do you have some on zoning?
My name is Sharon Gervin. I've lived in the community since 1973. I have witnessed the city and the county do lots of things over the year. I sold real estate for 16 years. And based on the things that I have seen, there's been a lot of allowances of zoning and reconsideration. This building that McGarver has owned has been there since 1940, which the neighborhood built around that building. It was commercial, as it still is, but there's residential, a multi-residential around that building currently. And there are no commercial buildings in that neighborhood. What they're proposing we do is only going to increase the neighborhood, it's going to make things look better, and I think that we should change it back to what's there now. And I think that would be a good thing to do, and a big community thing to do, to help our community. Whether people like it or not, our community is changed, and we need to look that we have a lot of people roaming the streets at night. It's going to be a safe environment, and it will also be a better addition to upgrading the neighborhood of our properties. And the community have, well, the city and the county have not upheld the worth of this is, and our properties are not looking very good here. And that is upon all of us, because we all live in this community. And the pride ownership has fallen so badly, and I'm very concerned as a citizen on that. And I think this is going to be a nice addition, and I don't think that McGarver should be disforming of the community yet. They have poured bliss, sweat, and tears into this community, and I think their heart is in the right place. And besides that, it should be still residential and multifamily. Thank you.
Anybody else have more on zoning?
Mayor, council members, my name is Charlie Twicken. I'm the CEO of Lake Health District. Thank you for hearing my comments. I think before you, you have a fairly straightforward decision to make. Changing the zone is what you're about. I have no reason not to approve this, irrespective of people's feelings about purpose of this. This community is in dire need of additional housing. It's in dire need of having multifamily housing. We need to find places for employees that work for our health district because they're part of the housing places. And I think it would be tragic if you don't understand that, and whether it's on this site or any other site that an applicant makes for multifamily housing. I strongly recommend that you accept and approve... I strongly recommend that you accept and approve this as a zoning change. Thank you.
My name is Jay Corrigan, the director of the juvenile probation, also of this Lake County community justice. Personally, it doesn't matter what my personal feelings are on the zoning, because I've lived in town. I have feelings, but it doesn't matter. Professionally, I support it for many reasons. I don't have to talk about the people that will occupy it, but the location and access to services is huge. You can't, we can't affect change in our community on any level without having direct access to services. And that that location has direct accesses to other than our office, whether the caseworker, the DHS, the attorneys, the courthouse, the recovery center, the wellness center. It's a centralized location. You've heard, you've heard it said, it's a commercial, it's a residential. Let's get it back to residential.
Could I ask you a question? What type of, what type of dependents or people that you work with would you recommend for this building? I guess that's not. Take a bath.
Great, yeah.
Yeah, my name is Mike Newry. And I've been in the community since nineteen forty-nine, I was, go back to them. I, you know, I have a bunch of the, you know, I'm aware of people that are looking for housing. And, you know, what they're been looking for is like a trailer or a garage to camp out here. I mean, and I don't want to be repetitious, but it's kind of like, like I said, there's just not enough residential, I mean, there's not enough residential options here, because they look for rentals, and a lot of this, a lot of people that are looking for rentals can't afford the few existing ones here. And so, whatever this thing might be used for, having a bunch, at least a few more residences, I think that's a no-brainer. We need it, we need a bag, and taking that narrow focus, I think it's going to lead us into a positive response to this application. Thank you.
My name is Spencer Gervin, and I'd just like to remind the council, some of you guys who are here, I don't know if you were when we had zone changes for the three multi-family dwellings that we have, south end, middle town, north end, and the up ward that we have were that. Nobody wanted that, because, oh, it's going to bring in all these bad people. But it's integrated itself into our community, and we don't even know it's there. The other thing is our prison, it's not the city limit, but the up ward of that drop down, we proposed that to come in. Because even, there's a lot of people here, and they don't even know it's out there. So I just wanted to remind you, don't let them off the hook.
Okay, there's more?
My name is Keith Kestner. I'm here to actually support the zone change to multi-family. And that's what I think, what I've read so far, it's all measured. There is a need for multi-family residents, I've put that said for many, many years, and it's substantial. On the pros and cons of who lives here later, that's not for the discussion here, I have empathy on both sides, but the issue before is the zone change from residential to multi-family, and we have a power need for multi-family. Good. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else?
I'm Priski Albertson, I'm the grant writer and leader for Lake Health District. I submitted a letter, you have that on the record, and just wanted to add a few more comments. As mentioned before, we have a desperate need for housing in Lakeview, you all know that. There are people, I know, sitting here right now who have struggled to find housing that they can afford. Housing, too, is just a baseline requirement for health. It's part of the reason the Health District is invested in this project, in this zone change, in housing of all kinds. It's part of the reason why my job includes more funding that's going to support workplace housing and low-income housing, housing of all kinds. You can't reasonably be expected to take care of your own health if you don't have a safe, stable place to live. As has been mentioned before, this place is already zoned residential. If you rezone it as multi-family, then you are creating an opportunity to have homes for several families, several people, instead of just one. It's going to create more opportunity for more people, more of our neighbors, to have a roof over their heads. Darling, you mentioned what's before you guys, is the zone change. And it's, what's before you is what McGarver's have put there, does it meet the letter of the law, does it meet the requirements the town of Lakeview has established, does it fit with what Lakeview needs as far as, well, again, the housing, is it consistent with the housing plan? Is it consistent with local and state housing planning and housing laws? And that, that's it, that's the simple decision before you. Is this in the best interest of Lakeview, creating more housing for our homeowners? So, thank you for considering that.
Is there any more in support?
May I have a suggestion, or should you go announce that online, because we've had a couple of people that wrote with that.
Well, is there anybody online that would stand support of this? I forget if we have this online. All right, we'll move on. Persons who are present and who oppose the application will then be heard and will be allowed up to three minutes. Correspondents in opposition to the application will be entered into the record. Okay, opposed and in opposition?
My name is Song An Ashi, I live at Willie Seventy-four, three Lakers Road. First thing is, is are the three commons multi-family? Earlier, the lawyers stated that we haven't had any in the last twenty years. Those would prove that that's not the case. Secondly, the thirteen acres that are considered multi-family are already zoned multi-family? Who has, who and what entity has declared that those are not viable properties or have viable ground to be used as a multi-family, other than McGarver's attorney? The standing parent say so, doesn't make it so. You want a fact, and you want an argument that were in basis of the zoning. Those thirteen acres are viable? Twenty years? Nope. Third, who and what, where do you get your figures on the water, the sewer, and the power that will be used in the rezoning? How do you know what will be used when you don't know what's going in? When you say that the water and the sewer won't be affected, or will be used less with multi-zoning, multi-family zoning than it would have as a Lea Lockers? How can you make that judgment and make it publicly when you truly have no idea what's going in? Washing sheets, showers, kitchen sinks? What kind of statement is that to me? Fourth, you asked us, you asked your constituents to muzzle ourselves into the zoning. Please understand that we are, please be respectful of the fact that we have been respectful and to be accused, and the intent that we made threats in the last meeting was a crock, an absolute crock. To put an attorney on here for disabilities in a rezoning meeting is intimidation. Do not be intimidated. It's a crock. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Can you move me a home and four?
No, I'm fine, they can see it.
Home and hell.
My name is Romo Schier, and I live at nine four nine six nine, highway three, one forty. And my husband and I own property adjacent to the Walker building. So, Mr. Mayor and members of the town council, I would like to address the question of rezoning the Lakeview Lockers to multi-family use. My husband and I own property adjacent to the Walker building. The first letter we received from the town of Lakeview dated April thirteenth, twenty twenty, stated that application has been made for multi-family use, media nucleus. The second letter we received from the town dated June twenty-third, twenty twenty, that application was made for multi-family use of more than three dwellings on a lot for permanent supportive housing. On July third, twenty twenty, application to convert the existing building to multi-family housing, fifteen to eighteen one-bedroom units. You have the application. This could house any person fifteen to thirty-six tenants, possibly more. I believe this would have, attack, counter, excuse me, I believe this would have.
Thank you.
I'm nervous.
Don't be hurt.
Heat or heat effects on the neighborhood and surrounding neighborhoods. Most of the houses sit on fifty to seventy-five foot lots, which makes for close encounters with each other. There are hundred and forty residents in two block radius with two to five people per household, a possibility of two hundred and eighty to three hundred and fifty people. In the block of the Lakeview Lockers, which is that one right there, is, there are nine foot residents, approximately twenty-five persons, to have another fifteen to thirty-six people would overpopulate this block. The Walker building sits on a seventy-five by a hundred foot lot. The building is approximately eighty-one feet long, fifty-seven feet deep. This leaves nineteen feet on the south side, twelve feet on the front side, sits against a driveway that shares with two garages to the back, allowing for setbacks or sidewalks. There is absolutely no room for parking of any kind. This lot is adjacent, adjacent, I'm sorry, this lot is adequate for a single-family dwelling. It would allow for off-street parking and not overcrowded neighborhood. In the comprehensive plan of the town of Lakeview on page eight, sentence one, it says, and I quote, "That private investment will be protected from incompatible development, which might likely diminish their value or unduly increase their tax." I believe both things would happen to our properties, since the supporting housing would be a nonprofit organization. The lot and the building would be taxed, ten, for property taxes. Can I finish? I've just got one more.
You can actually enter the written testimony in here, so the letter can actually go in.
Wait, do you need three minutes? Can you read the rest? Read the rest out. Read the rest. Can you do that?
If you would like to read it, yes.
Wait, do you need? I can read the rest of it, if you have further comment. My name is Renee Struble. I live at one one five North Dead Street. From one of her shares is my mom, way from her shares is my dad. Okay, so we're on July, on July twenty-ninth, twenty twenty, President Trump said, "I am happy to inform people living, living their suburban lifestyle dream, that you will no longer be bothered or financially hurt by having low-income housing built in your neighborhood. Your housing prices will go up based on the market, and crime will go down. I have rescinded the Obama-Biden AFFH rule," called the attached in this letter. According to President Trump, in rescinding the AFFH rule, there should be no fear of discrimination suit, for there is no discrimination. As the city council and representatives of the people of Lakeview, we urge you to do what's right and not rezone this parcel for multi-family dwelling. Thank you, we're going for shares. And do I just enter this into, or we just, can I approach the, if you don't? Council, I don't have to give it to you?
He goes to the.
I'll take it. Oh, thank you.
My name is Ed Henry, I live at twelve thirty-eight North Third Street in Lakeview. I'll just start out by saying I don't agree with this program. I would be opposed to the rezoning, and I think it would be detrimental to the community, the residents, and to the town. I'd also like to make a comment, and there's been comments made already, that much of the early testimony had absolutely nothing to do with rezoning. And I'd like that put on the record and disregarded.
My name is Orwin Henry, I live at twelve thirty-eight North Third Street. My husband and I have lived there for twenty-seven years. We have a very nice little neighborhood. I just want to put on the record that I'm very much opposed to this. The lot is not big enough. Thank you.
My name is Jed Adams, I live at two fifty-two North L Street, just down, just on the same block as the Lockers. According to the staff report, town, available there on the table, on page four, FB four states that housing will be encouraged in locations which complement existing development. I don't believe that it's possible with a multi-family development, that a unit that will hold up to eighteen units, that cannot possibly complement single-family residents in the neighborhood. Continuing on page six, according to the twenty nineteen housing needs analysis, aside from the hundreds of acres available for rest, for building, there's a thirteen acres available for multi-family already designated. And it does say in that report, there is no demand for new dwelling units. What we need to use is the one that we currently have. There are multiple buildings throughout Lakeview that are rundown, that need to be renovated, that need to be modified. Those housing, that housing is available if we put some work into it. We don't need new development, it says so in the twenty nineteen report. Same page, rule twelve, transportation, encourage safe, convenient, and economic transportation systems, says that it is net relocation property within the grid of existing transportation system. The transportation system in Lakeview consists of the senior bus, which is not going to be available to everyone in that housing unit. And that's about it. There's not much, there's not taxis, there's not bus systems here in town, which means those that aren't, that don't qualify for using the senior bus are regulated to walking, and there aren't adequate sidewalks, which means the town will then have to pay for sidewalks to be built, to make it to camp portals that don't have cars. And it says, continuing on, project will have less impact than previous retail use. For a unit that has fifteen to eighteen units, a building that has fifteen to eighteen units in there, that means we have up to eighteen vehicles in that, or not that area, unless without destroying current residential property, there is no parking. Where will they park? In the street. The retail bid used before, when it was in its payday on a weekly basis, might have a barbecue, and so that one night a week, it would be busy, but not like daily, morning, tonight, all-day usage. And just to wrap up, to try and keep this to a multi-rezoning issue, I live just down the street. I live there. And I can guarantee that my wife and I and our kids will rather live to an abandoned slaughterhouse than next to a building that will house up to eighteen different units.
Should I go?
Thank you.
If you want to enter the remainder of your statement into the record, you love it.
No, I made notes on both of those there.
Anybody else in opposition?
My name's Heather Erisol, I live in Oakwood, North Second Street. And I would counter the need, based on their own application, that in the two different analyses that have been done, both of them say that we have a twenty to twenty-five years sustainability, based on what we already have zoned as multi-family. I would also counter that the property that they are saying is on two steep of a hill. People have been building on hills there forever. People have been building on hills there forever. Who said it on hills? It can be done and there's more property there. The property lot that you're looking at, that owners already had the concern that they couldn't make that building be usable for, and for their business that they had had previously. So in all actuality, that building is going to need to be torn down. Then you have the setbacks that all of us have to deal with in town. So where the building currently sits almost on the edge of the property, will make that lot even smaller, including the fact that it's on a corner, and I live on a corner, so I know this, having to be able to have the visual of the traffic coming from the other direction. The numbers in their application have been inflated because of the prison coming and saying that we needed this number of housing, where that did not happen, it did not occur. And I would encourage you to do the math and see where it actually falls. And that's all I would like to say. I might have one comment. And that is, I believe Charlie said that he was concerned for this housing because he has traveling nurses. And I would like to say that that's not what this housing was before. Thank you.
Anybody else?
My name is Dan Decker. I live at 1598 Highway 395 South. And I have a property just, uh, a quarter from the Lockers location. Um, I'm going to stick to just zoning topic. I want to ask to be sure. This, is this the entire document or am I missing anything that goes along with this? The one that you have at the door, the one that was printed on July 3rd? Is this the entire document that it is? Nine eighty-four. Zoning application, is this the entire document?
Yeah, or just zoning?
Yes. Okay. Within this document, there are references to studies, and there's no information about those studies. And there's no reference where we can look at the article, examine the studies and statistics. So if you are making your decisions strictly on this, you don't, and you're going to trust that the statistics sentence, that will you, every statistic that's quoted in here, if you don't have a source to verify it, it doesn't mean anything. The other thing is, in terms of a zoning change, in terms of analysis for the infrastructure support for the sewer and water, um, it's going from a duplex to 15 units, two packages. Any analysis about supporting that many units? That needs to be considered in person. Infrastructure is very expensive to save. If, if you have the analysis, I think that we can see that so that we know that actually that. There's a reference that there is, uh, uh, buildable acres with 998, 1286 dwell units. So it doesn't appear to be anywhere near the land that it still owns. The town, uh, map here, highlighted for, uh, for multifamily. The zone here where it is, uh, I'm sorry, there's, there's, it's multifamily and what's the other term?
Support.
What's that?
Support.
No, 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 it says multifamily, multifamily identity. So, there are places for multifamily that are supported by infrastructure of the city. So that's not a concern. Um, and then I have something that I would like to hand you with regards to evaluations of properties. I have a copy of the 4th. And some questions to consider if we move to the next phase. Uh, and then, uh, one other question. If we move to the phase, uh, for the same review, will that be a public meeting?
Should be, yeah.
Do you want that straight to the right?
Yes.
So you just take them on the record?
Yes. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Town Council. Thank you all for being here. My name is Teresa Decker. I live at 15989 Highway 105 South. I appreciate your time as our elected officials and, and listening to all of the concerns of our citizens, which you represent and try to, uh, do the best for. And I recognize that's not easy. So I want to thank you in advance for your careful consideration and listening to your people who are here. Regarding zoning, it's not necessary. There's 13 acres available. These areas are not all on slopes. People mention slopes. Some of it's on slopes. Some of it's on Missouri Avenue, not slope out there, out in the Missouri area. Some of it is out east of, about, I'd say eight blocks east of downtown. There's no slope there. So, bringing up only slopes kind of muddies the water and it's, it's a half-truth. And I don't think we need that today. So I'd like to correct Ms. Decker in her statement that there is not, that it is not all slopes. And it's not all outside of walking distance to downtown. Eight blocks is certainly walking distance for a lot of people. There is sufficient zan, zone, excuse me, land zone R2 and R3. There does not need to be additional land zone R2 or R3 for higher density or multifamily housing. I am concerned that some think there will not be a significant change in traffic patterns. There will be. We've heard up to 21 units mentioned. At least one car, on average, two for some units, maybe zero for some. There will be a change in traffic patterns. That statement is not correct. We have documentation that Dan provided you from the rift.com that shows that value surely will decrease. Please take over the task. Consider the town of Lakeview comprehensive plan. Your policy, as mentioned by Ms. Arlene, is that your, uh, the policy is not to allow development, which will diminish the value or unduly increase taxes. It will decrease the taxes, I think, if you, if you rezonate. Community attitudes, social economic development, um, environmental changes, those things need to be considered when you make your decision. Alternate signs for proposed use need to have been considered, had this happened. If it hasn't, we're not prepared to make a decision today. If you have not considered all the other, uh, R2 and R3 properties. There are many units for low-income residents. There's not an excess of them. The Lakeview Commons, sometimes it's not a good place to live. We have friends that lived in the South Lakeview Commons. They moved out, even though they couldn't afford higher. They moved out because of drug dealing. So, um, to conclude, I'm not in favor of this. I think we're not in favor of this assumption.
I just wanted to ask, oh, excuse me, my name's Robert Dial. I live at 610 South First. I wanted to ask a question since I could not hear the lady in blue. Was, did you state that Anderson Engineering did a study? And they said that there would be no problem with parking? That's what, that's my only question. And if there was a study on the parking connected to what we're talking about tonight only, may I see that? Or may, can we all see it? Because I think there's a huge concern with the parking where it keeps getting kind of skipped over. And if somebody's talking about putting 18 units there and that could be two people in each unit, and let's just say 18 units. I drove by there the other day and I'm trying to picture where those cars are going to be. I think they're going to clog up that neighborhood. So I would like to see, you said that there was a study in Anderson Engineering, who we all kind of, you know, have grown to trust. If they did it, I'd love to see it. Thank you.
The only one I have is, uh, not very important.
So we don't have
Yeah, somebody should find that. I don't see anything from the analysis.
I'm sorry, Julia, what would that? Are we done?
Uh, my name is Denise Smithy. I live on 11 El Street. Um, I want to rebel against the statement that the houses he lives around the Lockers. My house was built in 1932, a lot longer than the Lockers. The Hoover's house was built before the Lockers. My husband's childhood home was built before the Lockers. So that statement, not true. I also want to address that when you travel North Second Street, does anybody stop for a stop sign? Does anybody stop for a stop sign? No. There's no stop signs. So when you add traffic to this, you add possible problems. I already live in a street where I listen to people coming from stock where I believe to the other side of town. They travel down my street all the time. I have horse trailers, there's stock. Hey, the buses go by, the school buses. Now, when you stop a thing, how is a bus going to sit around a 16 unit? Just questioning it. As far as, um, walking distance, I live in that neighborhood. Nobody walks the sidewalks. Why? Because they're not there. There are no sidewalks. It's dirt paths. It's broken down. There are no sidewalks. They walk in the street. I walk in the street. I don't want to twist an ankle. So these are all things that you're going to add to foot traffic. They're not going to be walking sidewalks. They're going to be walking the street, just like they do today. Thank you.
Is there anybody else?
I'm not sure if I'm whether, again, but I'm not clear on Slasmar C. I live on 820 North 9th Street. I've been a resident here a short time, this is 2018. Um, I would reconsider low income. I'm on these buildings, therefore, I'm sure I qualify for low income, but I would don't need that. But, um, I don't understand on page 5 of the application. I'm not clear on the statistics of how they get the population. Because on line a third of the way down, it says the population has increased from 3,182 in 1998 to about 394 in 2020, which states that's why they need this mold that down in housing. Then a little bit further down, it says about the Warner Treaty Correctional Facility that the population was 3,175 per week in 2012. Well, that doesn't matter. They just said a third of the way up. Those numbers aren't matching. So, has population gone up? Or that, like it states here, population growth will not drive demand for new housing. So which is it? Do we not need new housing? Or do we need new housing because population has gone up 23%? So that makes sense. I know me and my granddaughter have increased it to people, but, you know, I don't know. Also, um, the Lockers. Mine, who I bought it, it's a piece that I rent back. Um, it's a single car garage. Bottom of that is a picture wrapper from the Anne Walmsley thing. And, um, it was a picture I got great price on it. I took 12,500 into it on a USDA 502 direct loan. Specifically for low-income people. How much all price that is beyond me, but they did. It's possible. And now it looks like a brand-new house, freshly painted, side alone, and beautiful. But it sits on the same size lot as the Lockers. See, my granddad over there, with his dog. I can't imagine 36 people living there on that, I just, no. So, you, you know, everybody else that has property with a single-family home, can you imagine 36 people living on your property? No, I just don't see it. So I don't see how that's going to work on that size property. And I don't, I understand. Is, is population increased or not?
No.
People here, it says a 3% decline 3%. And then, further down on the same page, it says it hasn't increased at all.
For three minutes, Rob.
Well, that's a question.
You can, uh, leave that for the record if you want.
Oh, that's just on your application.
Okay. Yeah, well.
Page 5.
Anybody else?
My name is Frank Patten. I live on 336 North El Street. I probably lived out there that next to it as long or a lot older than most. So I've seen a lot of things going on. When I first moved there, kind of a rundown neighborhood. But over these years, it's, a lot of improvement has been made. And it's, in my opinion, it's a much better neighborhood now. What I would hate to see is that everything to reverse and go back there for us years ago. Thank you.
Anything, anybody else?
I just got a, my name is Wayne Brescher. And I just have a question for you. Does, does the decision of the town planning commission have any bearing on what we're doing here tonight?
The council makes this decision.
Do you consider that?
We couldn't hear a lot of what was being said.
So, so, that's what I mean is, that, that law was not part of this application.
No, no, I'm not, I'm not talking about
Not the commission, but the, the town planning, the meeting that we had.
Town planning?
Yeah, not the town council.
Town planning.
Does that have a bearing on, on that? It does, no?
It's a recommendation that they were
You know, you know.
It was recommended to us
To do the zoning.
But the town planning, we're recommended that to us to finalize the vote on
On the zoning change only.
Okay, so what they
Just on the zoning change.
This time you have
Just on the zoning change, Wayne.
Yes, that's, that's what we're talking about here.
Right, there was, there was no
So most of what we heard, that we paid people to come up here and testify against the taxpayer and, and and so, we paid their wages and for them to come up here to do this. We've already been through the town planning, uh, commission. They turned it down. Now, I will, yes or no, does that have a bearing on what we're doing here tonight?
It should not
Do you take that into consideration?
It should not because there was no findings to support the vote. If there was, there was no findings to support their vote. If they had had evidence So we can't, there's nothing for us to base anything on.
I see.
If there was evidence, you would look at that evidence.
So that was just, that's just thrown out, is that it?
Pretty much.
Pretty much.
It's enough to the council themselves.
Ultimately,
We went through all of that, we're nothing.
If I can give some clarification, ultimately, it's a recommendation that they're giving.
Yes.
They don't, they're not the decision making body, this group is. So, we, it was important for the record and any testimony that was given during the record, for or against, we have to weigh that. So it is important, it could have been more helpful if they had
So it is important, it could have been more helpful if they had written findings that were in support of their new recommendation. Because our old recommendation followed the current staff report that we have now. As it's still written, from my understanding, other, other bits of updates to the staff report or the what hearings and notices have been sent out. But relatively, this, the staff report stayed the same at a five zero vote and a two to three vote. Is that summarizing very well?
Yeah.
You, you may not have heard what Denise, uh, the legal counsel said earlier at the beginning when I, I questioned that.
It's been very difficult for me to, to understand this with all these masks and stuff. It's not having what I do as a lit area. But the fact of the matter remains here, is that's thrown out. Is that my point? Because they had no support. So it's all up to you guys tonight to make this final decision.
For zoning.
For zoning only, yes.
For zoning only.
For zoning only. And you are gonna take into consideration that about three quarters of what they did tonight was illegal, uh, as far as what the mayor said. He said we're not gonna touch them. You know, it's painted a picture that us over here will get free, but us, no, we're against, uh, homeless people. We're not against this thing. We're against putting it there.
Okay.
I don't, I don't have a comment. I just have a question. Is this the change to like, like our fire department? Is our fire department equipped to handle a facility in that? Because obviously it has to go up. It can't go out. Like the commons are, are small in structure. This would be a big structure. Is our little fire department equipped to handle a blaze in a building like that? Is our fire hydrants in a location to handle a blaze like that? Are, are snow plows equipped to handle the snow in the middle, the burns in the middle of the road on a street like that with all that traffic and the school buses coming in, it's right around?
You're not sure.
Yeah. I understand, but I'm, aren't, are, is that not a question? It's not, it's not. Are those not taking any?
Is there a question here?
No.
Okay. Okay. Time's up to work. Just wondering.
Well, if anybody.
Lori, this is number five. And I knew against the reason it was too small for the eighteen beds that, um, they want to have in there. If you're single-family residents, you just work with a lot, you can already see that, okay? And it's not just the eighteen people that are gonna be there. It's going to be friends and family, birthday down there also. Uh, the people who are in there. And that's just what it is. That's all I can say.
Anybody else?
Can you ask about online as well?
Yeah, I'm ready to. Does anybody online have any questions? Comments, anything? Okay, we'll move on down. The applicant is given the final review at which time the public. Oh, I'm sorry, yeah.
She should have, uh.
Right. I guess right, she should have, uh, first, right?
The applicant will be given the final review at which time the public hearing will be closed.
Miss, let me deny it again.
Senator Rager, again, uh, here for the report on behalf of the applicants. Uh, again, wanting to thank you all for making special meetings. This is an important decision. It deserves the attention that the public has brought to it, the attention that applicants have brought to it, and the attention that you and your council will bring to it. I want to clarify that, yes, this decision is in fact a quasi-educational decision. It affects a small part, a small property under state law that, um, factors that test whether our decision is quasi-educational or legislative or met in this case. You're not creating broad policies. You're not updating your entire comprehensive plan to address multifamily zoning despite the fact that your housing needs analysis in twenty nineteen says you need to update it to provide housing land available for all income levels. So, yes, this is quasi-educational. We've gone through quasi-educational procedures tonight. We appreciate that. We think it saved you. Uh, you're using your legislative process because you noticed it that way. And I would suggest that the code probably needs some updating to reflect the complications happening here. But, uh, that addresses one point as to the planning commission meeting. Your code requires a recommendation. You received that recommendation. And as far as knowledge, you also have the transcript. You're able to watch the hearing on the newspaper's, uh, website. So you have access to that hearing and, and the, uh, weight that you put on that recommendation is, uh, is accurate. And as you've described, that there were no findings made. And our letter has set forth specific quotes from that meeting, and we believe through that decision, and were not based on proper planning, uh, criteria. So with that introduction, um, I ask you to, to bear with me as I go through and respond to the significant testimony that was raised tonight. Um, okay, so there's been a lot of comments about the thirteen acres that are available for, uh, multifamily housing under the comprehensive plan. I went and looked at that before I came to the meeting tonight. And unless you have a lot of money to develop that site, that, those sites are not going to develop with multifamily. It is perilously close to exclusionary laws that say that that housing plan is for people of all income levels. The lowest income, uh, projects or developments could never be supported on that land. And so this proposal before you proposes a multifamily zoning change that could be available for any range of use. Again, the example was eighteen in the application, but that's an example. For comparison purposes, the book that goes public facilities, look at transportation impacts and, and think about how this could affect the neighborhood. But what your code allows in your multifamily zoning is more than three dwellings on a lot. And that is the only thing you would be approving tonight. You're not approving eighteen, you're not approving fifteen, you're not approving four, you're not approving twenty, and you're definitely not approving a homeless shelter. Homeless shelter has never been on the table. And homeless shelter is not a multifamily use. It is shelter use, and that is something different. So, uh, there was a question about how do you know about the sewer usage? And if you look at page seven of my letter, uh, of August seventeenth, I go through in detail, using the data that was provided by Anderson Engineering, to describe the range of gallons per dwelling that would be used, measured against the eight-inch diameter pipe that has a sixteen-hundred gallon per minute capacity. And the highest demand of my example was five point four seven gallons per minute. So there's definitely added with capacity in the sewer mini to accommodate even up to eighteen units. And it's something different than that, but there's plenty of capacity there. Um, there was another, you know, there's, there's talk about how many more people might come to draw this site. And again, there is no site development plan. There, uh, there is, there's been questions raised, um, about property value. We've seen at the planning commission, the same Realtor dot com's, uh, document that was distributed tonight. And that document compares a homeless shelter to property value. That document contains absolutely no underlying data. But if you look at the attachments in the letter that I submitted, attachment seven, eight, and nine, they speak specifically with underlying data about the impact of permanent supportive housing on property value. And the, the complaints are unfounded. Uh, but as the crime, similarly, permanent supportive housing actually can have a positive impact on crime statistics because there's more eyes on the ground. There's people who are, uh, serving the population there to keep, uh, crime rates down. So if you look specifically at attachment seven on my page numbering, my letter on August seventeenth, I think it's twenty-three, twenty-eight, forty-three, forty-five, forty-seven, fifty-two, and sixty-one, you will see this all summarized very well in a supported data-driven study. I'd also point out that in the state of Utah, they have taken a housing-first approach, just like, uh, providing multifamily, providing wraparound services and those types. And they've seen massive improvements in the homeless population services that are provided. There's been co- uh, comments about whether, uh, whether this would be complementary to existing use and making residential use of residential property with multifamily is certainly complementary to a residential neighborhood, far more complementary than commercial use, um, or a stagnant building that falls into disrepair. There was reference about whether the transportation system can handle this. Um, you know, if you look at the double-sided letter, you'll see from Anderson Engineering that a proposal that required, uh, that would have more than three hundred trips associated with it is required to do a traffic impact analysis. Even at eighteen dwellings, we don't come close to approaching that as an example. So no traffic impact analysis is required for a zone change. It hasn't developed in a company yet. And we're talking about a transportation network that exists, not just bus service. There's adequate street capacity to, uh, to allow people to move out the site. This site would be required to meet modern standards, including, uh, construction sidewalks from, uh, So again, uh, you know, there, there's been an example in the application materials of the kind of multifamily that would be built. But as other people have commented, there is a need in your community across levels of income. Whether you work for the Lake District Health, uh, Hospital or whether you are coming out of a criminal system or whether you're moving here for another reason, or whether you live here already and you wanna move out of Mom and Dad's house. There are a whole lot of reasons why multifamily is located in a broad sense. And this would serve that need and that housing choice. Um, let's see, there's, um. The materials in this, uh, in this file have been available at the town hall. Ever since the beginning of this file, it's open, so people got adequate opportunity. Uh, there's been way more process and procedure, way more hearings necessary for this, uh, proposal. And, and there's been a lot of opportunities for people to participate over almost, uh, four months of time to, to this decision point, as we're going to do the decision tonight. There is no requirement to consider other alternatives when there aren't any alternatives available. This is the proposal before you. There has been no other offer of properties to my clients to come and buy for multifamily use. There were no other applications before you. And there's no way that the multifamily zoning can address the income needs of a range of users, um, at the sites that are already there or that those have been available on the market for them to purchase. Um, again, there's no development that's proposed, uh, issues about parking or site design issues. So that will be, uh, included in the mix of, of use that's actually proposed and, and will have to be addressed, obviously, under your code. And that, uh, views from the corner will also be addressed at site plan review. This is gonna be subject to, uh, you know, agency discussion and influence. So, so site distance and, uh, access will be addressed. Um, the staff report, so the question about population is on page four of the staff report. You have a current population of three thousand one hundred and seventy-five people. You have a housing needs analysis that was prepared back in nineteen ninety-nine that made a projection. And now you have a housing needs analysis that was prepared in twenty nineteen that makes a projection going forward and anticipates a decrease of two people by twenty thirty-nine. But that doesn't address a need that already exists in the community for multifamily housing, a need that hasn't been met adequately. There's, uh, a lot of data in the letters that are provided about, uh, putting in time counts for homeless people. There's, uh, plenty of testimony that was here tonight about other people needing multifamily housing as a housing choice. And suffice it to say, the nineteen ninety-nine housing needs analysis did identify that multifamily housing was needed in the college, college of affordability. Um, there was additional questions about whether the fire department can serve this need. The fire department was provided notice of this application. They provided no comment. And so, uh, the assumption is that fire needs can be met. Again, at site plan review, the, uh, the need to address fire hydrants will be, will be made and, and, or then build this, a building that can be served adequately by fire services. Um, and, and I wanna say to that comment that, that in the way that it was raised, it's someone who wants to have it both ways. You know, if, if you say that you don't think the fire department can handle it, then you're saying that those thirteen acres can be served farther away and have more equipment spending services. So that's a whole argument. That's not what I said. I will just say that, that, uh, applicant has been, uh, upfront about what it proposes. It is taking the first step towards developing multifamily housing at that site. And this is the first step, is to rezon the property. Can't propose anything. Help have a rezoning. And we ask you tonight to make that decision. There's a lot of support in your community. We understand the other side. We're cognizant of it. As you heard Ross Darv say, he is open to talking. They hold held community meetings. They'll help more. There is an open door in terms of the ultimate design of this property. And it's not here before you play, but the rezoning is. And you can make a big difference in your community by approving your hearing tomorrow. Thank you.
Don't run off from there.
Okay.
All right, members of the council and the county attorney may direct questions to the applicant's opponent to assist in arriving at the decision. I have some questions for you. One. Oh, all right, the hearing is closed at this time at, uh.
Mayor, I have one question, and that is, is it appropriate to ask that the vote not go tonight until the council member was not here to be fully updated on, on seeing how the meeting went? It's on air.
Well, yeah, I should make that decision. We should make that decision. You can do your deliberations to another time.
I would have.
All right, the rec, records need to be closed down at twelve. Okay. Now can I ask her a question?
Excellent.
Okay. One, we talked about thirteen acre. Have you seen that thirteen acre? Because I, this is the first I've heard about thirteen acre.
It's up behind the pool area, that, the rocky outcrops and the steep slopes. There's thirteen acres back up there. That's the.
That's the first one.
No, it's not. It's a little block. It's not there.
Oh, that's my problem there. I don't think you're.
If you look in the twenty nineteen housing needs analysis that is in the record, there's a map. And it shows that it's behind, uh, Co-Vars, behind the water towers on the outside of the box. Well, it's on the outside of Lush Box, this back here, and the tower comes this. So the, the Lush Box area, though, is also steeply sloped. We're not that. I disagree with that. It's a pause. There's a contact.
Planner, you mean with the answer?
Oh, that don't matter.
But to clarify this, let, let me just tell you, okay? This is the county, or the town zoning map adopted in July of eighteen. And on it has our multifamily colored in green, which I looked up today in the office and looked up prior when we were starting the June. I'm not sure where the thirteen acre number is coming from because Co-Vars piece is twelve point two two. because Coe Rar's piece is 12.22 acres. And then the north piece above that, my last name Smith, that was according to the assessor's office, is 17 unchanged. And it's not wrong, it was 29 unchanged. So I'm just wondering where the...
Sloes over 25% are attractive on that acreage, which is important as a team comes.
Okay, so thank you for the clarification.
So, but to clarify the location, because that is crucial. It is, and I know you're not from here, so I'm bad, but it is lots next to Lush Walks. It is not this back here way up past the pool, which we do all, yes.
I guess, Virginia, you need to clarify us on what we're talking about on the housing needs analysis, which again wasn't adopted by this board.
What's that got to do with the...
It was not accepted.
No change before.
Okay, this is between the council and the attorney and nobody else.
Council members, read this louder, what you guys are talking about. Yeah.
So, as you can see, the outline of that is Lush Walk right there. The two trees right there is Coe Rar. If you see how that Lush Walk can be told. That is the lot. Can you guys stop the words a little louder so we can hear you? Well, you need to make sure she would look direct at the property and ask. Because that is crucial to the model.
Because imagine alternative housing analysis.
But the question was posed to me about whether there are alternatives. Counselor Darwin just asked that. And in the housing needs analysis of 2019, which is informational information about what is designated and buildable, you have this area here that is zoned multifamily. It is steeply sloped. It is not available for purchase. It does not come before the council for a vote to approve a multifamily house on this property. And so when you look to alternatives, you have to look to true alternatives. And this 13 acres is not a true alternative because it's not available.
Wanting to know exactly where that location was, correct?
Yeah, I'm sorry, please, no. Where's your cover?
Yes. The largest of the parcel is at the very end of the street.
It is 25% of total 30 acres is why the numbers don't match up for acres. Because they eliminated the steep rock, correct? So it is last 13, buildable 13 acres. Would that be correct, Janine?
Yes.
Just 30 of its total, but 13 buildable.
Two-story house there that I cut, that I didn't help put out, because it cut further.
There's a vacant lot that is just in the house. And then there's a garage or a big barn right behind that vacant lot. And then there's a big two-story house that is right next door to Lush Walk. Is that the property you're talking about?
Yeah, that's probably what I'm talking about.
Okay, well, I just want this on my notes.
Because if that don't move by the city, or even if it's not, it could have been bought with housing if somebody would have known about it at the time.
It's not for sale right now and it's not available.
Do you know about that, Darwin?
I know it was for sale, not only within two years ago. I looked to even purchase the property, thinking multifamily, you know, has a lot of potential to be developed and partitioned off. Yeah, sure, there's a lot of slopes of that area. You know, and I know I was part of the housing needs analysis that it hasn't been adopted by this group. I was talking to that, about the process to be adopted by this group. And I know members on that group that were not all that thrilled with the end result of that one, myself included. And when it came to that time, we discussed the results of this Northwest, the consultant that was behind, Equin Northwest, that was behind the grant that was awarded by the state to do multiple housing needs analysis throughout Eastern Oregon to try to figure out, you know, some, all the housing needs that are lacking. And I'm not doubting that anyway. I'm just saying that this, the two properties that we're talking about, they're, you know, it's 13 and 13, and that's fine. I just wanted clarification. And so he gave it to me. But I mean, the site itself has 27 parking spaces already in ingress, egress. Easily adequately enough to build a new complex, which is what... Let me ask you really quick. I'm having a hard time. I know we're supposed to be focused on just the application for rezoning and not consider in resultant use. I get that. I think you all understand that. Again, my decisions are going to be based on the staff report findings and how it means our turn. Yet the staff report itself references the 18 units throughout. And I think it's actually inappropriate to be referencing the in resultant use because it's mixing the two. But the application goes into the use, so the future use. So it's troublesome to me to not consider all testimony that's been given in this when we know full well what the in-use is. And that's the hard part when you say, well, we need to base this on just the zone. I can't do that. I've seen the application and I see the findings that have been drafted by our planner using your staff report and using testimony. At first, applying commission hearing, there was not adequately noticed to adjacent owners, which the staff report references. At least four were not adequately used, was then re-noticed. That was, if you recall, at the meeting, I wasn't thrilled with remanding it, but I did know that we did need to have those people notice correctly when we have a procedural there. So we're at the right point. But looking at this staff report as it is, as it leads, I think it's troublesome in making all the statements and a lot of the stuff that's in the record, painting the case that this board is going to make any judgment outside of the criteria that we're required to make. So I have more notes and I'm going to reserve my comments further. I want to respect your time out there. For the mayor to continue on with his questions, I don't have any more.
I do have some questions for him. So for a three dwellings or less, is there a minimum lot size required by Oregon statute?
That would be governed by your local code.
Well, so...
And that's single-family zone, which is the property of zone currently...
So that's what I'm asking, is there a minimum?
Janine should be able to answer that one. On multifamily...
Three dwellings or less.
Application will be...
Because this is for a greater than three. Now, is that R2 or R...
Getting to these standard.
Neither.
R2 and R2, not at all.
Yeah, we only have R...
So was we, okay, I thought so, but I guess I'm...
The testimony, mayor, the testimony, zoning, this county does have...
Well, I'm...
A, yeah, yeah. So I think that's what... But the map will tell you exactly what we have.
So what is the minimum square footage for three dwellings or less?
Three dwellings or less is 6,000.
And this lot is 72, so five... Okay, what is it for greater than three?
10,000.
Okay, 10,000 square feet, okay. Roughly a quarter of the floor. Is there a minimum parking for three or less parking sites, including 18 acres? For three or less multifamily?
For the record, which section in our code was that in? Was it under multifamily that you just said 3,000 or three or more units is a 6,000 base and if it's more than three, it's a 10,000 base?
Yeah.
What section in our code is that? I mean, that's kind of key. This lot is not 10,000.
Well, I'll be real, my history comes from that, just to make it clear. Understanding what we need in the minimum code requirements. So that's why I'm asking these questions.
A lot areas have been tabled 2.1, 1.1, 3.3, A. And this is Jennifer, I'm just going to bring up the reasonable accommodation request that we've made in my letter and we already did here. Right. This is a hard place to be at the intersection of having a site development review, which is when those figures apply, and a zone change. And I know it's really hard to separate the absolute use.
But a zone change does no good if the property is not useful. And that's why you're using it basis for the 13 acres. So I have to do the same. Your 13 acres is a minimum, I gotta do the same thing.
And I agree that you'll have a variance procedure?
Yeah, but I can't, I'm not the base, but I'm just fast. Okay, so what is the parking requirement or less, three or less?
Two spaces should probably be...
Two spaces. And what is it greater?
I didn't know if it was reduced to one. Or 3.3, 300. A, C, and it depends on the height of the building.
Well, so let's take the lowest number, minimum parking spot. Sorry, studio, let's say it'd be 18, would that be correct? Or 15 acres or whatever you want to say. It's a one-in-one ratio. But, and that's what, I thought there was a minimum 18 as well. But at minimum, four spaces, bigger than four acres.
Well, again, you can't, you can't, um, the number of bedrooms in four...
But that's why I'm saying at minimum, studio greater than three plus dwellings, require four parking spots, not including 18, which I think is like a... But let's just say minimum. Okay, where's one of my major, my major questions?
Mayor, can we interrupt before, maybe?
That's okay.
We're here to interrupt before... Your other questions?
Well, yeah. You know, when this was first brought out, it was brought up to us as a homeless shelter. Now we're going to multifamily. Now, what changed here? Because something, because everybody in this room remembers that it was brought up to us as a homeless shelter, not once, but twice.
Ross and Kelly, do you want to address this question, did you hear the mayor? Hold on one moment, just a minute. We're getting the volume on there. Just a minute. Okay, let's go.
All right, it's never been referenced as a homeless shelter. That is not what it is. It's not what it's planned to be. We're asking for a zone change for multifamily. You're talking about units, by definition, I believe, of a unit. When we get several buildings, we're planning one building that will have a parking center. Does that answer your questions?
Well, because I really remember that Derek gets up there and talking about homeless all the time.
He speaks about chronically homeless people. That's the quote, it's chronically homeless. That's what it's designed to, it's not a shelter, it's not transitional housing. It is their home, it's their home.
They called it permanent housing. So you elaborately said...
Supportive housing so that they can have wraparound support. So if they don't find us back out on the street, that's the interior.
But they'll be subject, if that is the ultimate proposal, those folks will be subject to a lease, unlike a homeless shelter where you stay for a short amount of time and they have other ways.
Well, when a homeless shelter falls, falls as a commercial property? No. I believe that's the only thing.
Anyone else following that?
Yeah, that would be totally different. Multifamily dwelling, so it's not even on the table that it's a homeless shelter.
That's correct.
So that's...
Well, they were never using it, they were never saying homeless shelter. They were using the word permanent housing. They were like permanent housing.
Okay, oh, oh, just put it out to her, okay? And then maybe your attorneys can answer this one as well? Because I keep hearing that there's repending lawsuits out there if we don't pass it.
I'm not aware of anything that's been threatened. There is the threat of a lack of a decision that may be incorrect or certain human criteria, but I'm not aware of any threat of repending lawsuit this time. The thing that there could be liability under the Fair Housing Act or state law or American Justicilities Act if the decision's not made with neutral criteria based on the objective criteria that you guys had to consider. So that's my understanding of what things are at stake.
If it's made based on what we think may go there, then it has weird old lawsuit.
Sorry, if it's not a description, it's not protected class, but there are the other protected classes.
If it's made based on just the zoning change, then at least due to facts from the report that fell in the set, then Derek is...
Does anybody else got any questions for it? Because I am, I am just...
Mayor, I just want to know. You know, I guess maybe I'm looking for an answer to how we address the staff report that references throughout and documents, supporting documents throughout of the in-use of the 18. And a lot of studies have been done by our engineer to talk about what was passed, you know, on, was that letter that I have, the death review, it doesn't address parking, it just, it's traffic needs analysis. But how are we going to address a staff report that is...
how, how are we going to address a staff report that is, it's got more than what we're talking about?
Counselor Dalton, this is a, a very typical kind of thing to happen in local government, where an applicant puts forth, if you look at my August seventeenth letter, it is written as a zone change, reflecting the pieces of the staff report that require finding. It is often the case that in this, in an approval scenario, the applicant can't sit in a finding. You can adopt findings subsequent to your vote to approve, and that is what I would recommend here, to resolve this.
To adopt, to find, to.
To make a decision, your city attorney will draft findings, and then bring them back to the council for signature.
And that would be my.
I, I would agree with that, because when it references this, I think it means all those references need to be taken out. Because it complicates the, the, the record, and what we're trying to make it to the city hall.
May I say something?
Hold on, please. That's Ross, Mr. Carter.
This is Ross. Did any of you bother to read my letter about how we got into this process, where we got the eighteen from? Anybody bothered to read it?
Yes.
No, thank you, so I think that explains that we are far, that, that is the number that fit the space when the building was salvageable. The building is not salvageable, we are back, similarly for this, it might be twelve, it might be nine. I mean, that's the next step, we're asking for a zone change.
But you're asking for a zone change, I want to clarify, for greater than three dwellings, now, and by definition.
It's one, it's no, it's not three dwellings, it's multi-family, it'll be one building, at least that's, I mean, that's gonna be up to the architect, and it'll come back if you decide.
So, and then for clarification, definition for Oregon's statute says, a dwelling with greater than three separate units does not count as one, am I correct? If I have one dwelling, one building, three separate units, that is considered a three or less dwelling, is that not correct? If there is four units in one building, shared halls, is that considered a four-unit building?
Yes.
So, so what they're, what they're asking for is a greater than three unit dwelling, they don't need to be detached?
Correct.
Okay, I just want to clarify, because, I mean, I understand that, I do, I have long history in this, so I know that, but, and I, Mr. Carter, I hope that you understand that as well.
Sure, that's fine, in fact, the definition goes to that, but, but the fact is, we are not designed, with, it has not been designed yet, we will work within the space, within parameters, we will ask for variances as needed, and have a site review, that's part of the rest of the process. We're asking for a zone change to multi-family.
So, so.
Yeah, I know, and it references that, so that's why we're.
Right.
It's mixing, it wasn't, we really wanted to discuss, I know there.
Do you mind, this is counsel mind, if I ask a question, for the other attorney? What combination are you requesting for a zone change, if we're on behalf of your clients at this level? I, I don't want to go into the site review processes, that's what we're talking about, but what is your specific request, based on our standards that we're dealing with here, for an accommodation, what, what, where do you see as the need upon, or something like that, just so the counsel understands what you're actually requesting, I just, I just want to give that.
A reasonable accommodation to any policies and plans, and any standards that are not clear and objective, and to any extent that the council looks beyond a zone change, the minimum lot sizes, a reasonable accommodation that particular purpose, so that we can address it at site plan, and, and have the option to address it. There's nothing binding the council to approve such a new, or the decision.
And with the follow-up, what is, what is your understanding of what the reasonable accommodation process looks like, if they grant that request? In other words, it's more than just a variance of standard, it's actually, if there's process involved, what would that look like? Or, what are you kind of asking for, Ross, it's just because you're dealing with the idiocy of this, what is your?
We need to continue the conversation, and have a back and forth, and then, there has to be reason. Um, if you're still listening, you can help out with this, I believe, on the reasonable accommodation request. But there's guidance, and we're, we're having a conversation now. And so, there's more conversation to be had around it now, or later in the hearing, then we should continue to have that conversation.
So just for the council's, um, understanding, when a request is made under the American Disabilities Act, and sections of the Fair Housing Act, for an accommodation based on, like, class things, special disability, then there is a required interactive process, that goes between, um, a decision-making board, and even at a level like this, where decisions may be made, to address those concerns, and if it is, really, really practical, and that's, again, a simplification of the standard, to make that a combination without completely, you know, part of the process, and it needs to be made, so by doing that, they have triggered, and we're doing some of that tonight, that you guys asked a question, so, you're engaging in some of that. Some of the later stuff, that is more site plan would be related, all needs to be more, that process almost needs to be more done at that level. Again, it's outside the scope of this decision, and if you use that as a basis, that can be seen as violating the directive process, because it needs to be, give the applicant a full chance to ask for the accommodation, and you guys look at it objectively, and prove it or not.
The applicants, application itself references being up to eighteen acres, and so, when we look at all this, and, you know, these are those who are against, look at this. All, almost all testimony tonight has been based on a future use, that is for permanent supportive housing. I, I don't even appreciate that we've talked about that at all, and really, all that testimony should be struck from the record, from our decision. Our decision is absolutely based on the staff report criteria that's listed, and, I think when we bring out the size of this lot, and what it can, according to our ordinance, support, and, according to the limitations set by, um, square footage requirements, you know, yes, you can have to per variance, and the variance may say, oh, well, we're gonna say, it could be half that, or, you know, parking can be off-site, or, all those things that we'll be talking about later. I think it's important that the applicant, before they even make an application, get the full information on what, you know, it will entail on, on meeting criteria besides just a leave zone, which is needed for the, the desire of future use, but, there are still other hurdles, and square footage is, and, and when we talk about parking, you know, Ross, appreciate the comment, you know, that, that the, if we're back at the drawing board, um, the, the fact is that billing, you know, the way it sits can't house, three to four, possibly either, meeting those other requirements, um.
An architect.
Well, yeah, and I know, and I know an architect will now have to be looked at, and that, that building will be raised, but, then, then we potentially have a, a, a spot-zoned, uh, lot, that really, at best, could, without variance, house three units, and, all arguments that are based are on, you know, we need this house, and it's supported, we need it, and yet, we know we have thirteen acres, whether that's, built or not, it's still parking analysis, and to spot-zone something that's point one seven of an acre, seventy-five by a hundred feet, is really, difficult for this board, now, we're gonna focus on the staff report, and I, again, a minimal.
I'll also add, sorry, Ross, I'll just also add. Go ahead, Ross.
I want to back up a little bit, uh, when we first applied, this was approved by the, unanimously. This zone change application was applied by this board unanimously, and then the newspaper wrote an article about the timing project, it was gonna be, all of a sudden, the public outcry happened, and now we're here. That's a question, I guess, that should, really should be looked at, not staff, we're just saying staff. Same thing, yeah, change.
So, I want to clarify that, because I've heard that several times, first off, what happened is it came to my felt person, my attention, that not all neighbors within a hundred feet, and I'm talking about not the residents, because it's mainly got to be the. Was not notified. In our meeting, in, before that, wasn't it?
Yeah.
The first meeting we had here, Darwin made note, in our remanding it back to planning, that we had concerns that all parties were not notified, that was made and clarified in that meeting, that's why it was being remanded. Because at that point, we never as a council had any discussion, there was a legal process that was not followed. And that is why, and then, yes, there was some, probably the newspaper, I don't really know the timeline, to be honest, but that was why, in our meeting, and that was, clarified and reported, that it was because of the fact that all parties had not been notified. And I'll, I'll just add here, that this process is designed just for this kind of dialogue, and it doesn't mean that an applicant is down by the application. As I've said this evening, this is the zone change, as we all said, this is the zone change, there's no design from you, there's no, meeting all code requirements before you, this is the line change requirement, and it meets the zone change requirement, and we set that for.
Uh, the way I see it, it's a hundred twenty-two units, there, you're gonna have to, what, three stories?
Again, we're not gonna dive into eighteen units, because we're not. So we're still in the remodel, so it's really just.
I'm gonna hold off on that decision.
Well, we're still in the level, it's my not correct.
It's still, it's still in the.
Question, so we're, we're not at a discussion or part of our decision-making, so, any further questions, really for applicants is where we're at.
Or opposition.
No.
No, actually, no, you're, you're sorry, direct, it's just a question for the applicant.
I'll answer. I, I know, it's gonna have to be.
It's the council's time, it's the council's time to ask questions, so, do feel, cut questions.
Hey, you, you, sorry, I have a question. Earlier in time, it was talked about, um, page five of the staff report, um, the town's policy X B four, third paragraph at the bottom of the staff report on page five, that houses will be curbed in locations which complement existing development, to make the most efficient use of required resources and services. What wish would you guys is finding on that, and I'll see what's good here.
So again, uh, going back to clear and objective standards, complement is a subjective term, and shouldn't be applied to this application. To the extent that you, uh, that you do apply it, this design, multi-family, of more than three units can be designed to complement the new reference. There is, uh, existing, rundown, commercial property that is derelict, and new housing in a residentially filmed area, on residentially filmed property right now, only adding a multi-family layer to it, will definitely use, um, efficiently use existing services and facilities that already serve the site. And, to me, there's just not a question transforming an outdated commercial site to residential use in a residential zone, given the whole context of the application, the rest of the materials.
So you say an efficient use of a building that would be made, so you're saying that building would be re-modded?
I'm not agreeing to, to whether that is gonna happen or not, as, the zone will change to multi-family. The applicant has designed something that they think will satisfy your criteria, or come before you with a combination of requests to satisfy criteria that you need a community need, this is the zone.
But would it not say site instead of building, because you're implying that the building is going to be used still as it sits, what we might would say?
That was in the original application, but as the decision, as well, and as Ross say, that, that the building is unlikely to be reused.
And you're right, sorry, I apologize, it's not the site, but the staff report not in this application.
It is, again, unfortunate if you remove a building, and there's an idea that up to a certain amount of number of units can be established, when our ordinance would have to be greatly, justified, you know, buried from, to get anywhere near what is in applicant's application as eighteen units.
There's also a lot of what-ifs, what if this council, in its most oppressive state, decided to amend the code, and allow up to eighteen from the site, what if, a whole lot of what-ifs, I mean, the way that these, uh, developments come to fruition is first with the zone change. And then, the world is a loister, and the developer and property owner works in partnership with a whole lot of people who either were in this room, or in this room now, to try to serve a need, or they propose something different that fits the property and meets your code. And that will come later, this is just a zone change.
Would you agree that the, the state's comprehension plan and their goals takes into account uses of property beyond the zone? To be progressively more.
I guess I, I'm not sure your question, I think there's been indications from the state legislature by passing House Bill two thousand one and two thousand three, that the state is looking to increase density within urban growth boundaries to address a port of housing, because cities have not done it. And so, it's coming from the state legislature, cities were performing, then the state likely tried a legislature, but they haven't. And so, those kinds of indications then passed on to rulemaking, and D L C D that's going on right now, and how cities fulfill housing needs analysis, applies statewide. There is a need here, there's a need for permanent supportive housing, hopefully the Magardas can fill it, but if they can't, there's still that need, and the, and the state is looking at that need on a, on a completely different way than it ever has.
So, uh, and this is for Ross, as well, and Kelly, uh, would you agree there is a need nationwide for housing?
I.
Because need is huge in this application, correct?
Yeah, and we have statewide planning goals that speak to housing needs, to statewide planning.
That's what I, would agree that it's, it's a nationwide issue, it's not unique to like you.
I agree that it's not unique to.
Um, because, you know, we have to take into, to account with zoning, because of need is used a lot in this. And, and I don't think that's unique to us.
It's a term of art, though, in Oregon state law, and it's, it's that we have housing across all income levels, which is why it's speaking to all income levels, and it's how, this property could be used for all income levels, that's the what-if, the world is our loister scenario. The Magardas have a vision, and hopefully they can, you know, a proposal that they want to see come to fruition, but, we'll see, you know, this is the first step.
Because, uh, that's why I think there was staff, well, upon our findings, we'll have to take out all references to the what-if that they proposed in the application, because it has changed, it's, we're back to the drawing board, and the limitations, I don't want to give a false hope, if we're approve this, that says you're gonna be able to do such and such, when that may not be anywhere near a variance allowance that could be possible on this lot, especially with the current.
I appreciate that, of course.
And I really don't, I, because I think that you've been misled, I really do that, I have a clue, it doesn't really matter, but, the, you, your intentions, I, I'm fully believe, I, we sit here with many people in the audience, who are, are friends, who are neighbors, who care greatly about the community, just as you do, not one side of this cares any less about the community. They're concerned about potential use on a small lot in what is absolutely a residential, semi-formal area, where a Grant Harbors since nineteen forty building was always built as a commercial use, whether it was built before or after a lot of homes in there, certainly some of them would be found to be newer than nineteen forty, and I, I, I can appreciate. And I, I, I can appreciate the statement before, but also the rebuttal um, from Renee that said, you know, some of you weren't obviously now. Um, I just, I feel we're in a very tight spot in our community to vote on this. I, I know this council doesn't appreciate it, but appeared to be threatening letters saying that we were violating any law because of 88 reasons. We hadn't even discussed that. My reasons for rejecting, you know, any, any remand was all based on that. My testimony again goes to that the process wasn't followed correctly. I didn't want to remand this because of public outcry, I wanted to remand it on procedural. And, and it was, it seemed like it was being remanded for maybe the reason that the other four voted that really, you know, the public hadn't heard what actual question was for. Again, that's a side thing, and we've been told many times, as has the public, that the, the site plan review process is a totally separate matter. But again, when you look at the application, again, that's why I feel you may have been misled in even submitting an application, a demon in pursuit that should not reference at all. If I would have been the land use attorney, would have said, don't even mention any potential use. Just say you wanna rezone this property with a multifamily and here's how you meet the code, very simple. Then you're good.
And that would have been, that would have been very underhanded, and that is not our intention from the get-go. We have been transparent about the intention for the property and it was designed according to the allowances.
And, and again, you know, with the committee that was formed about a year ago, you know, to, to investigate this, and I know you guys finished through trainings, you guys worked with Grant to go through trainings. And, and it just, it seemed like there was a ball dropped somewhere that explained really how much could go on this lot, this particular lot. And I think the time and money would have been well spent, the intent was to serve this class of people that are really, you know, needing supportive housing, or not supportive housing. We should have been looking at something that could have facilitated that. I've got great details on the three that were rezoned prior to my arrival into this community for the comments areas that we have, all of those properties are much larger than the property that you have.
And, and
And there's way less, I mean, you know, at the density ratio that is proposed in the application, we're talking 88 units if it was at, um, just 15 units. If it's 18 units, it's up to 105 units. So those densities are, are way beyond what some of those units have currently, which, which are, the, the one that's north of town, um, on North H Street is, is 13 units, I believe. If you retain one, and it, there's a whole acre there, okay? So we're talking 12 to 13 units on an acre. The one that's south of town, again, it's, it's roughly the same amount.
Darwin?
You know, so it's, it's just a tough thing that if you guys want given
I own 207 North L Street. I have applied for a zone change. I may consider three units if that's what I have to consider. I have applied for a zone change to a decent property that I own.
I understand, but the application, it says more than what you're saying. Yes, I agree with you, I, I agree with you.
And we have a reason that we can gather in full disclosure and to take limits to the outside edge so that we can work backwards.
Hoping that we can have a, an agreeable community to make it work, but I, I sense that there's a lot of underhandedness that has been going on behind the scenes. Uh, oh, I'm, I'm certain of it. And, and I know anyone posted out there.
Well, Ross, if you're gonna say that, please explain what you mean by that. Because I, I'm being very objective here, as I think, I know that this board will, and I, I haven't given back to the other issues that have, just, I would just say to you, but I, I think you're dis-serviced, and I'm not sure when your attorney came on, it was later in the process.
I, we don't feel dis-serviced at all. Without an attorney, we would have never gotten this far because of the level of prejudice and hatred that we've experienced over this project. Without an attorney, we would not be sitting here tonight. Our attorney has stepped in and given us guidance. We are more than willing to work with anyone and everyone regarding how this project moves forward. We own a piece of property at 207 North L. We have requested a zone change for more than three units. Multifamily overlay residential, that's what we've requested.
Can anybody get any more questions?
All right.
Thank you.
Sorry, I didn't have a quick glance, I was getting my next note.
Okay.
Bottom of page five, one of what you're finding was on X D five. Well, it says the multifamily housing should be encouraged through implementation of zoning just for that really uh, restricts development of new single-family building units in that this zone should be located near activity centers such as downtown and other commercial areas to promote pedestrian activity and, and efficient use of it. You guys, I, I know that you said that this is still near the downtown, but this is saying should be located near activity centers such as the downtown, other commercial.
I, I went around that property, I mean, you could walk to City Place, you can walk over to the nursery to buy things for your house, you can walk up to the pool. It's as close as you can get in comparison to, you know, multifamily residential further away from these facilities. There, again, those part, properties aren't owned by the McGarvers, they're not a real law, so, so
This is the criteria that we have to base a decision on.
And again, I'm going to grab to clear an objective, and this is an aspirate, should be encouraged, again, as objective term. And so how do you apply this and what mirror is, you know, my version of mirror, the way that I saw people walking in that neighborhood today is very different from some of the things we've heard about people walking in that neighborhood from other people.
So you're
So different opinions are, are certainly there.
I, I get, I get that. But, so you would say that any location in the town of Lakeview could be an application can be filed and meet this criteria? Because we're talking about one of the smallest lots probably in town that is in the middle of a residential area, not near a commercial and not near downtown. Whereas the three other, three other properties that successfully went through rezon and built housing, housing units were adjacent to commercial and adjacent, um, in some cases, adjacent to downtown. And we also still have unused, the Jankus Plus, that is again, adjacent to commercial and, and just downtown.
But unavailable, that's
That's not true, actually.
But that, unavailable isn't
Well, and available doesn't mean things not usable.
If the McGarvers are here, they have this property. This property is planted here, these time uses, commercial uses and activities factor. We have differences of opinion clearly in what you're saying. I am saying that under state law, we're subject to objective standards because this is a needed housing application regardless of the need it's filling. All housing in Oregon is needed housing, housing at all income levels. In addition, the proposal is timely government assisted funding. And that brings it into the needed housing goal for a city of its own.
And that's why I asked, because to me, it doesn't matter the need, because that is a statewide issue. So there's always to be need, there's a need for, I want to know that there is nothing that is not a need in any community that shouldn't justify by need.
And this is the way that things don't happen. I just like under justification, that's why you have to apply golden to a zone change decision.
Which, which
And that is what I've tried to have applied.
But need is a, it feels like a big basis for the
It is, it is.
But there, there is no lack of need, I mean, you need a skating rink, you need to do it. But I, I think there's
But the needed housing is, is different than the, than the world recreational center. The goal five process for recreation. It's a totally different legal structure. And so I'm not talking about need from a perspective of the state or the nation. I'm talking about, you have a 1999 housing needs analysis that said there's not enough multifamily for low income range. That's adopted housing needs analysis. You have evidence of the nineteen, of the 2019 housing needs analysis that says that that need is even greater.
Which we have not adopted.
That's right, it's just evidence, it's just evidence in the record.
Well, and I feel like, I'll, I'll be real honest, I feel like that record could potentially be obsolete by July of 2021, depending on state funding situation. And then we are gonna be on the opposite side of that with potentially a surplus of properties available and not enough people to, to reside in them. If, for example, Warner Creek gets shut down.
We're here today and Warner Creek is here, you got the file used facility that's running there, you have uh, the Lake District, uh, chief executive who said that he can't find enough housing for his employees. So there is, right now, a demand for housing.
But it appears in our housing report, it says our housing, our population decreases
by two people over a 20-year time first.
Which is still, yeah, but it's not a substantial growth.
And I'm saying that then you dive to the next level, which is this income and what's available for your lowest income residence. And you've heard some people testify about, uh, garages, trailers, parked cars, and, and you have a need. You have a need for multifamily housing at all income levels, particularly at least income levels. Regardless of what happens, and maybe even more so if some of your major employers fall, fall away. But you know, that, that would be terrible for the, the other side.
Do you guys, do you have any more questions?
I'm not sure if I can answer my other question, but your, your comments on the couple of ones that last so far are not very objective standards. This is a valid criteria, so I'm not sure how, and if adopted, acknowledged by the DLCV as our working, living, moving stock, whether it's outdated or not, it doesn't include all new references to goals and housing needs analysis and local lands inventories. It's still the working document this board has to use to date, so.
And I'm saying as a flyer, there are some little issues that I raise.
So, and we did it, and, and we still haven't voted, I'm just, I would just wonder what your opinion about the staff report finding, um, order.
Well, I'm still available if you were to decide.
You may, I, I, I hope that we can reserve back if we need to ask another question, let's continue.
Okay. All right, no more questions, then move on to the other last one. Council will make a decision or continue its process for another time and day replaced. You know, I'm myself, I'm not comfortable with making decisions. There's, there's the things that, I don't know, I'm, I'm still up in the air.
It doesn't need to be, it doesn't need to be capitalized.
Short word issue for it.
Well, I think this 13 acres, there's, there's other places that, I just don't think that that place, you know, they're big enough for to be worthwhile for, for humans.
Mr. Mayor, I'm gonna, I'm trying to you back. Sole decision to try to use whether multifamily housing is appropriate for that particular lot. The, as they have discussed before, and you don't need to stick with the staff report. We're only dealing with, are you going to have this for multifamily housing, and that's very important. There is no particular project that they have voted on, so that is not a concern at this point, that's site plan review issues.
So, well, I feel like I'm being, I'm being threatened. If I don't go for it, then I'm gonna be sued. That's where, that's how I feel right now, okay? And I don't think that's fair to the council, I have to feel that way, for myself.
So, one of my concerns is numerous times, um, accessibility has been brought up, and, and I think that accessibility and density, um, and they're asking for three plus, so minimum three plus. Based off that, it doesn't even meet the square footage requirement. So, for the lot size. I guess maybe I've never seen in a town where they've reached things that didn't call, follow the minimum zoning plan. It is no secret that I have had major issues with the lack of consistency and flow in the community with property here. Talking about, a friend about how we don't have a sidewalk in a house built 15 years ago, which was a requirement back there, back then, and why it wasn't followed through in a new subdivision. And I think about access. Um, I don't care, I mean, there, I'm not even concerned about the residents, I'm looking at buildings. My concern is access and undue hardships on the neighbors. It is not a town responsibility to fix the sidewalk. It is the owner of the property to fix the sidewalk. And I don't think that that location can support the traffic flow um, that could happen, and even Anderson says that while it doesn't meet the 300 potential that he suggests, I do believe he did suggest a traffic flow step. At the same time.
Out of the office.
Which is also a site review element. Because the issue was raised, we stepped out, the town council stepped out and asked Anderson to do a review. That's what you have before you. That is a site review element.
Okay, so, so, you know I mean, I guess I'm having a really hard time with not taking into consideration the use of the, not, not the residents, whatever, three plus. And not meeting the minimum square footage of 10,000 per our code concerns as to whether it flows through the neighborhood. I personally, residential and residential multifamily to me are not consistent and do not flow. Especially, you know.
And I'm gonna begin it right now, I'm talking about these objective standards, flow is not something
Well, okay, let me give you the, that word you guys have to not, or think, consistent. I don't find it consistent with the neighborhood.
And again, I've been aware of this, with that standard
Compliments, that was the word, yes.
Compliment, again, and this particular issue with how they phrase this. It has to be an objective standard, and again, you don't have what that is, it's not something that's meant to be objective.
But does the state code say, per R zoning of ORS 227.1754A, says they say you may not approve an application unless close development of the land would be in compliance with the comprehensive plan of the city?
Correct, but there is also a, there is also federal and state law that overlay that, that override that, that say you don't apply objective standards, it's discriminatory, and that's a bit
But the, okay, I mean, again, we'll you know, anything can, you know, point about two slides, and, and anyone can paint a picture for or against, we've got stuff on the record, you know, about bringing the house prices down, you know, surrounding house prices down, that's certainly one compliment. Obviously, that's talking to the use, but what use has been discussed from the onset when this council looked at it back in June. And it, that's why this, you know, it's unfortunate that the applicant didn't have an attorney to look at this before because it has convoluted and created huge public outcry, which is not the standard in which we're going to base our decision. But it, but it is, a lot of back and forth has gone on with that. But if we can't even use our, our criteria, the staff report's written with these criteria, and we're trying to to use all test point that's given to us to base this decision on. And whether it's clear or objective, it's in the application. Now, if, if we're going to, um, change the goalpost, so to speak, during the the middle of the game, which, you know, our ordinance, we've all discussed needs to be updated. Takes a lot of work for a small community to update ordinance. You know, we went through, you know, grand process for this housing analysis, that you know, said what I said about the, that.
Analysis. Yeah, but it has to be based on what our ordinance.
But we're going to look at this, and we have questions about it. And that's why, you know, I think when we all base our decision.
How many questions have you got left? I mean, that's a split that, I mean, you know, we've gone on and on about the same item a couple of times.
Well, it only takes one, with my understanding, to deny something, and I, I feel that there's. You need to come up with the right answer for, to build a staff report if we're going to approve this, and the way it's written in the test point receiver is written, and the way the application is presented, referencing the desired use. I'm not sure how we can now separate it when it's in the application, you know, and.
We voted on this at one time unanimously.
Because we were told, we were told, no objective to it, and people did not get.
But, but three of them.
And the planning commission, their recommendation, it was unanimous. And that was based on false, you know, false notice or false information about what the application really entailed. I need to look back at exactly what was noticed, how this was noticed. I mean, there'd be someone probably just said it's approved or something, that's all right. But nobody asked, and, and no answer to this, you know, given. And this comes back to me about, you know, it's very permanent.
Questions were asked at those hearings, and we answered all the questions. Planning commission said, what is this? Then we told them what we're gonna do. Oh, that's okay, they approved it unanimously, town council. We were on the road, we were on our way down here to Texas. We, you asked, the community outright, pride is based on prejudice and communication for all for discrimination, is only about those people.
Well, that's not the basis of our decision.
Very unfortunate that the three properties were not noticed. And that is also disfortunate, very disfortunate, that it's in your requirements that you put that on the applicant and not on the staff or somebody from the town to double-check that, please, that should have never happened. But there we are. So, again, I come back, it was approved, it was approved again. The newspaper wrote a letter about homeless children, but nobody bothered to ask any of the people involved in the projects, whether it was accurate or not. And, and here we, here we are.
But our decision is not based on the public outright. I, I have no problem with being objective based on something.
Well, why didn't you look at it closer the first time then? You know, you didn't look at it all, apparently, the first time until the public outright part. And again, I come back to, nobody wants those people in their neighborhood. You put banana bread for them, right, and they crawl under your back door. I'm upset, sorry.
I, I understand your frustration, and I, you're not the only one. I personally was very upset to hear that I, I felt like limited information was given to us. Very limited. And I've asked, way before your application and anything like this, I've asked, because we all know I kind of touch the buttons, about why things are done a certain way, why we weren't, why these meetings, these planning meetings aren't publicized better? Because we need to be in the know, so. That, that is not reasonable.
But it's interesting that you say you want to give them enough information. And in the previous statement that Garbus just said, we actually gave too much information. So it really means, what you're saying, we provided as much information as was necessary to request a zoning change, and actually, we gave you too much information, obviously, because it caused you to blend the site evaluation elements into the request that is before you.
I'm not talking about from you guys. I, I wanna make that clear, I don't, I don't, there's something that in the.
Who else would give you information?
I felt like the planning recommendation was not sufficient in information. That is my personal feelings on it. In addition.
The planning recommendation in your staff report is insufficient?
The ones from, like, March, January, I mean, we're talking way back. And then I am legally obligated, when I find out process wasn't followed, to, to say something about it. I can't make a decision knowing process wasn't followed, and it's not.
Right, and it was, it was followed.
Well, there was.
For multifamily to a piece of property that would be owned at two oh seven North El. We requested a zoning change to multifamily.
Did you notify all owners of property within a hundred feet of the property?
You recommended it, Nikki, it went back to the planning board because they were not notifying. You are accurate. At some point, it went back, and then they, there was mob rules in the, in the meeting, and you have no findings, so it's counted, it's denied.
If you listen to the transcript of the planning commission, more than sure that planning commissioners actually said, I hope we don't get killed on the way out of here.
I have not heard the most of that audio, so I'm sorry.
I've listened to that.
The transcript's been submitted.
But I don't know that there's really a whole lot for me to base the decision off of because there was no evidence to support your vote.
Right, right, because there was no evidence. You have no findings, you have mob rule in a meeting where they felt like they could not vote as they had before, it was five to zero unanimously. That's what you're saying with.
Yes, so us as a council has to really dig deep into our code, our rezoning requirements and things like that without the support.
Your staff findings state that we have met the requirements for the multifamily rezoning request on two oh seven North El.
I personally don't agree with some of the staff report findings.
So as you, as you.
They're fine, just vote.
And that's what I'm saying.
You've got unflipping evidence, and you have to say which one of those you're selecting to base your decision on.
One of the number one things that, and I have numerous, but right here, the town, page five, top paragraph. The town only has thirteen acres of land in the residential multifamily sub-district. Much of this land is in an area with slopes twenty-five percent or greater, making it more difficult to develop multifamily housing. And then it says it suggests that it may not provide opportunities for development. First off, the twenty-five percent has already been taken out of the total acreage, so that kind of isn't accurate. Of the thirteen acres, I would assume, and I mean, obviously, this is a.
So the support should be ten.
But, but I would disagree with that because I believe that site has more flat surface area than the proposed site. So that, to me, wouldn't, wouldn't work. That, that, anything in reference to the fact that our current multifamily property isn't adequate would have to be taken out, because I don't believe that's true. And that's what a large basis of this is. Let's see, no other property has come forward with a proposal for this permanent supportive housing, and there is no other site available. So while I cannot speak to whether or not any other property has come available, because I wasn't in any of these meetings or any, you know, and obviously, I'm not from Garbus, but there is other site available, so that also is not true. There's, oh, sorry, I guess I should have referenced page number, page eight. It says Lakeview has a large surplus of residential building land. However, much of the vacant land lacks infrastructure, water, sewer, roads. That is also not true. I mean, we have a lot of vacant properties that have water, sewer, and roads to them in addition to our multifamily zoning property currently. And it even says that we need to focus on land that is serviced and sits near the town center. Our multifamily zoning sits as darn close as you can pretty much get. I think it is probably where it's going. I mean, to me, that is an ideal location, and probably why, when this was developed in two thousand eighteen, that was created there because it is a central location, close to, near the town center. It's actually composed by the property owner. And adopted by the town. So, so we go with that, because the town adopted it. I mean, you can't rescind it and go back and say the property owner made that.
It's your side, I don't know if it was built. But it is, in the locations or criteria, the policies are setting for us are to look at and that it should be down, near downtown and adjacent to commercial. Not, the word adjacent is in the word, downtown and.
Near. And then later on in that page, it says that access, topography, access key transportation corridors and other characteristics may make our residential multifamily less likely to develop. I, I think that that is also another unfactual truth, because, one, it has thirteen acres of flat. I would assume, obviously, it needs to be surveyed to give you a back, but I could say it's over seventy-five hundred square feet, at least, since there is a twenty-three-spot parking lot there currently. But that is actually, to me, not only do we have better transportation modes from that location to, and there's even a lot of, I don't remember if it's a hundred, but that location, because those are sidewalks, which is a mode of transportation, that are in better condition and repair for access to services. And it's closer because, and you know, maybe I don't need to take this into consideration or I can't, but I'm thinking if somebody access-wise is in the mider, but it's certainly a significantly shorter walk through local services than the middle of the residential community. I mean, I can go on, but.
You want vote tonight, or you want wait?
I prefer either way, I'll be real honest.
Hold up voting. So, whether, what, I mean.
I, I don't know why, but that property owner, to me, doesn't, even by rezoning it, doesn't seem like it's gonna be big enough for a multifamily.
But the whole thing is, we don't take into consideration at this point. It's strictly a zoning, a rezoning here.
That, that case is the concept of X step, which would become a design plan. Then it is decided whether or not the property.
Who decides that?
A planning commission.
And then they deal with it themselves.
Planning commission reviews it and, and makes a decision, and then it goes to.
It's a big deal. This, this decision, this decision might not take into consideration, like, this one on the property.
Yeah.
It's a very simple, it's a simple zoning, rezoning argument at this point.
And that's why I'm pointing out that those items that are not factual to me.
The property that you talked about is not available to do that.
That doesn't matter, we don't get to determine, use that as a determining factor.
I know, but you.
No, that was another area where it could be built. But there, there is a zone property, whether it's for sale today, tomorrow, or next year, it doesn't matter.
There is a zone property.
There is a zone property multifamily in the site report, staff report.
The property is two oh seven North El, and I have a zoning change request in front of me.
Can you, I mean, I, can I have, I have to say it clearly for you. I mean, what does it mean about alternate site for proposals? What does that mean, what does that mean as far as, it doesn't mean that another site is potentially available, it's actually available, not, correct? So can you explain what the state thinks the council says?
I, I would just say as a point of order that, again, you're running into a clear and objective issue about what alternatives these things need, and that is a problem. We have different opinions. You have a buildable land inventory that says this is multifamily housing, these thirteen acres. Yes, we agree, but you have a property owner before you who doesn't own those thirteen acres. Not one ounce of property on that land. And those folks who own that property are not before you with an application. It, in our view, in applicant's view, it cannot be an alternative. So to the extent that you even need to look at alternatives, they need to be available. And that's my position.
And where is that ordinance that said they must be.
It is a comprehensive plan policy that is not clear and objective.
So you're saying there's a comprehensive plan policy that we need to follow?
If it's clear and objective, it can be applied to this application. I'm saying it is not clear and objective. I'm not teaching the goalpost on you. I am saying that when you apply a standard to needed housing, then clear and objective requirements under state law apply.
What would be, could you define that for me?
That, in this case, for a zone change, it would be that that the maximum density allowed on this property could be served by the public sewer pipe.
That would be the only requirement.
No, I'm not saying the only, you asked for an example of what would be clear and objective. Or, you know, building heights are clear and objective standards. Getting a cycle.
Okay, that's right.
Yeah, so.
You're kind of muddling it too.
But I'm not writing your complaint, and I'm, but I am applying, I am representing people who are inclined to our needed housing application. And so clear and objective standards start to apply because these are stubborn and this is.
And, and I'm a real blind guy. I, I think those very clear and objective, but not then for me to say yes or no, because what I see, I have, what I believe is clear and objective. And so, if you direct your, you're right what you want, you're really helpful.
I have a question for attorney. One, if we don't pass this, what happens next?
If, if you don't pass it, and you, then they, and they are equally proved that you do not apply third objective standard, there is potential liability. If you don't pass it in, you and court finds that you did apply third objective standards, there isn't, same as if you pass it, but that's the overlay that goes along with this. So the standards you have to apply by state and federal law have to be clear and objective.
So, so in further telling Ray the answer to that, if this is gonna be considered quasi-judicial, then it goes to L U B A, so Landy's Board appeals the state law. Not L C D C, and under, under a legislate, rezoned would have, have been reviewed by, on the appeal. But what that, what L U B A would then do is, is either remand it to us or to reverse the decision or take the decision. We're building with three things to do. Now, I'm not, again, our decision will be based on the findings, you know? Yes, we've all heard, both sides, for and against, according to a potential use that was, you know, described in the application. So, again, that's why I'm saying it's hard to, to take what the applicant gave us and put it to the side for future, but we will do that. This decision will have to be based, not just the, the staff report findings and criteria that, again, at the time of application, were presented in a clear and objective standard presentation. I mean, it's not, if, if there's an objection to that, that will be raised, I guess, at L U B A, and L U B A will say, you know, those aren't clear and objective standards, yet they were adopted and acknowledged, adopted by those who know the comprehensive plan policies, who felt, for whatever reason, that rezones and zoning or multifamily housing should be downtown, should be posted commercial. I mean, that's one standard. I, I would imagine that that group said, we don't want it located in the center of residential homes. And that's why, three applications prior for commons, those properties, got, went through the process, and were allowed to be rezoned in the. And that's why three applications prior for commons, those properties got, went through the process and were allowed to be rezoned in the locations that they were in, which is adjacent to commercial in all cases, all cases, or actually a commercial property in one case, in one situation. So maybe I've both pointed out some areas where we feel the staff report may be lacking in positive finding a fact that, that supports the, the decision to move this forward. I think that's why I'm wondering what you guys feel about that, like these couple's criterias, whether they're gonna be found later. They're the current rules and we have to use. I mean, we can't just say, oh, we don't think those are clear and objective standards and throw out our complaint. That doesn't work. We have to apply the standards that we have in front of us. And we, at least two of us have looked at this and said, there may not be reason to approve that. Now, if the planning commission had by, looked over those staff report, they maybe could have made some of those same decisions they didn't. We can't base our decision on theirs. It won't be. It goes non rule line. This, this, I, I can think clearly and my background is applying, obviously. I will make it my decision based on findings. I'm not there waiting to mean hang, hang in and say, we're gonna vote no and not state the reasons in the record why we voted no. Because if there are, I'm not gonna waste Luba's time, waste our time, waste the applicant's time, and then actually truly set us up for live. But theirs is the recommendation. I'm okay with them not giving a proper recommendation. In, in other situations, we probably could have sent this back to them and said, you stole or, or at least write a decision to bring to us that supports your now new recommendation of three to two. And you better not base it upon non rule because that, that is not how we can make any decision when it's based on land use law. We have the criteria, it can't be based on opinion. Can't be because we own a backyard. So I, I understand. A lot sized is very troublesome to me. I feel that certainly regardless, you know, great intentions, everybody should be concerned about the neighbor, great wishes you made, we are, we all are. The fact is, with this lot, it couldn't work for the use that they've applied for, which is up to eighteen units. I can grant you, you know, you may make the criteria for three. That, that's part of this board's decision to see if three or more change into multifamily works. If it does, right, the side final view, always, the side final view would be handled in another process. But to reference this staff report throughout, referencing a potential use that we are being told we have to keep separate, it, it won't work. We will have to redraft the majority of this if we feel that, and so I don't see how we can make even a decision based upon the criteria that we forced and the current findings that have been made. And we just brought up a couple of the, the issues that we have with the findings. And that's based on application. I've read, they, they have the proof to prove it, but a couple of questions that I've raised, I don't see how it is near and centrally located. Down next to commercial in the downtown. It's not. That's, that's kind of objective. Let's stop saying that we're, we're gonna fold the world and it's now adjacent. I mean, it, it's not. It doesn't meet that criteria. And that is a criteria in our code. And so one criteria, one takes to deny something, I'm, you know, very aware of that. But your opti leaves a better finding. That's why I asked applicant's attorney, what is your, and then we said, oh, it's not clear and objective. Well, that, that's, that's garbage to me. That, that, you can't say, I'm gonna throw this out because that's not a clear and objective standard, which you knew when you applied was the criteria that you were basing the application. If you, if they felt, well, we may never meet that, so maybe we should stop with this application process and consider other lines. If, if it doesn't meet the criteria, I, as a planner, constantly daily tell people, you're not gonna meet the criteria. You're not gonna be able to do that. You can make an application, Janine probably did something like that. And I'm not saying that you didn't. I'm just saying, I don't know how that went down, but, you know, you know, parking, we've talked about that, even for three units at this location, seventy-five by hundred feet, you're gonna need, I did the math in my notes here, a certain amount of square footage per space. And if they're saying we're gonna need two per unit, we're gonna need at least six to get to the minimum we're, we're asking for. We're gonna need at least six spaces on this small lot and then still build a structure on this when the structure's removed. And I hate thinking that the borrowers are gonna spend all this time and money and then never get through that process because this process.
Don't worry about it. Architects need a community address. That is a site review element. We had a zone change request in front of you for multifamily overlay to residential.
Mr. Mayor, can, can we close this to deliberation out only? I'm, I'm, I'm done with your analysis. I know what the applicant's trying to say.
What needs to be stated then as you look forward is what facts you wanna rely on. And that, and that, and that's the fact that the finding report, that depends on what facts. And it doesn't have to be the staff report. It's your responsibility to get all the facts of your decision and the findings report.
Which is a lot of work. I, I've given.
Absolutely.
I know, and I'm not trying to.
No, 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 no.
Throw you under the bus or anything like that. You're doing great job.
My next, my next question. If it passes, then what else?
Can you appeal to the way?
If you appeal to the way.
Twenty-one days to Luba.
But I would like to add one other thing. There is another potential review in court by, which is federal court.
After Luba.
No, federal court can actually do it immediately. They can take, if they could, again, they have, I'm not saying there has no violation process or that, but if there is, they can.
Well, that's fine if, yeah, if they wanna do that.
The script's there.
Just have to base it on fact and you will.
Okay, you've been saying passes. And then what's the next process?
The next process would be, I mean, there's, there is a certain time period, I believe it's twenty-one or thirty days. For an open intent to appeal to Luba, that's the right process. They review it, make sure they, they can either remand, affirm, or, well, actually affirm or remand, or sometimes direct finding depending if they find that there was total violation process. Typically it's remanded. If they already what you stated on the firm, usually based on procedural ground or something along those lines where they can even work out precedent. And then it can be then appealed for.
Okay, so.
That's true, Dan.
That's true, but yes.
Okay, so. So although. Who, who's proved the dwelling that go on there? Is that the?
That's the site plan review. That's the second process.
Okay, the planning commission.
Planning commission. And then there's, and then there's a right appeal to counsel if the planning commission decision is disagreeable.
But the council has no say in.
The council, if, if nobody appeals it, then the council does not. If it's appealed, then the council has the ultimate view.
Our variance language has to, you know, variance has been brought up on Saturday. I'm only gonna make this point, or because it's for future, if it's approved. On a side fire review, if they're asking for a variance, they should, at least by some words, the county says, they should have been the one that created the problem. And then they were unaware at the time they bought the property that that something, you know, existed. So having a variance from something, when we're not gonna, you know, potentially approve something, knowing well well, which we've discussed on those, those density standards and where we need to get to on six thousand acres of the base, ten thousand or more than three, you know, it's, it's troublesome for them moving forward. And that's why again, I, I can only bring that up in that I feel that there's a disservice, you know, on, I don't know, I don't know where that was. I don't think it's Janine. I don't. It's to the applicant to review their application criteria, you know, and future use criteria. Not just this rezone criteria, but if they're potentially going for something else, they should what they're, what potentially they can put on their portent to a laws that are written.
Okay. No, that's all I have.
So Mayor.
Yeah.
I know I've looked at at least three reasons where I feel this could be denied.
What?
See, but, but, at least three reasons in the staff report where I feel it could be denied. I think you may have a couple more than I. Okay, but when we write a decision, okay, when in June ninth, whatever, we held, before June ninth, we held a meeting in town hall. And the information we were hearing said, planning commission approved it unanimously, no opposition to the law. And we said, wow, okay, that's amazing. And yes, we will prove this. That was, that was done, probably with little information. I think you said that there were a whole mile of information and a, a real rundown of what is zone change. We had to look at the criteria, we had to discuss the criteria. We didn't, we, we had the application and it presented in a way that there was no opposition. There was, we saw the findings and, and we dropped the ball. I would say we dropped the ball, not you, or you know, not really diving into the staff report at that time and saying. Because we also knew that later we would make the actual ordinance and have another vote on the, the ordinance moving forward. Tonight, if we make a decision, for one, we have the staff report that, in my mind, at a minimum, does not reference nineteen or eighteen different units. It cannot be based upon that as a potential use. Most of the information we have in this is supportive of potential use. The applicant's attorneys, those that, that have said they support this type of housing, that has nothing to do with this. Ours is a rezone application and the criteria goes with it. It can't be based on, you know, underserved people or ADA, you know, protected people. It can only be based on, doesn't meet the criteria.
That is.
And there's at least three things that I can see that it doesn't, so.
Dar, 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 I, but I would just really go on to that point. As the applicant's attorney said, because there is one part of the use that does apply, because of the type of housing there is, there is the overlay of federal state law. So that is, I'll leave consideration to base my type with that. So that, you have the zone criteria and everything else, but that overlay also.
So, so ultimately you're saying because they say there's a Fair Housing Act or there's these statewide planning goals.
No.
Housing.
Because.
We should just approve any application that comes with.
No, what I'm saying is you have to apply third objective criteria because of the type of use they're doing. It just changes.
No, the use has nothing to do with it. We, we, we are very established that the use has nothing to do with it. That is not this process. That is a separate process. You cannot mix the two. That is a separate process. So if they wanna try to have appeal based on what we're now throwing in that process, that's conflicting the whole thing. This is based on the zoning ordinance and the clear objective standards, I believe, are in this document. And we want multifamily, all of our predecessors adopted an ordinance that said, we want multifamily nearest the services in which they will be going to. Commercial, you know, public services, recreational, I think is one of the words that we choose from here, activities. That is not in a smack dab in the middle of a residential neighborhood. And the commercial zone itself, you know, bless our forefathers on, on, all the people before us on zoning, we were blanket zoning area community. We didn't take into effect the existing uses on the ground or the existing subdivisions and, and different uses that were on. Blankets on everything EFU and we had subdivision of five, you know, ten acres out there, you know. And that's not a cut of you again, Janine. That, that's just what we were thrown by the state down to us. Hey, we gotta protect our cultural rights. In this case, you know, if our objective standards are not clear anymore and don't follow state law, then federal court will say, hey, you didn't follow it. But that's, that's not the criteria we're going on. We're going with what is in our comments of the plan now. And it, and for to think otherwise is, is kind of out, outside me because I don't understand how we can apply standards that are not adopted in our code and which haven't been really referenced in, in the staff report as the basis for those findings. Then we're just gonna throw out these other objectives. That's why again, I ask for, you know, if we wanna say, you know, well, actually the Fair Housing Act or the ADA requirements all trump everything in the topic now, then that's different. You know, that, that'd be totally different, but that, this staff report's not built for that. It's not, it's not presented in that way to us.
So Scott, are you prepared to make a decision tonight, San Diego? Right?
I don't, it's like I don't have a choice.
You have a choice. Do not feel pressured. It's okay. Trust me, like, I, I can.
I'm not ready to make a decision.
I'm not saying whether it's wrong or not. Either way, I don't, don't, don't feel forced. Um, so.
I think we can discuss it a little more.
So we can.
I have mixed feelings on that.
I understood that you kept, you wanted to bring that three findings.
We even have, I can go back to them, yes. And I, I'm motioning to have to include them, yes. I, I don't wanna leave, like I said before, I'm not gonna leave you, hang in, whatever motion that maybe, you know. But that's why I, I wanted to know from, from both sides.
Let's just go, let's get the vote and get it over.
Well, but again, the criteria, I mean, if you look at this, opposition to me could destroy this.
I know, I've heard this.
Staff report. And I want to be, look, we're gonna do ourselves a huge disservice and this will be right back to us if we don't make proper finding. So the questions that, that have been raised by myself and Hickey on at least a couple of these points, I just wonder what your opinions are. Because if we're reading it wrong, you can tell us, but when you, when you guys think, well, we have no decision, you know, our heads are tied. But we've just pointed out reasons why there may be, you can still get to know. And I'm not trying to, you know, I'm just trying to protect the borrowers from bulldozing a building and never getting to build something else on a lot that is some standard to potentially be in the residential or.
We, we have our life protection, our, so thank you.
I mean, you know, that's, that's the thing. So we can rewrite the finding that.
Yeah, yeah.
So if, if, you know, there is.
That, that will tell us, that will direct us on what the.
If there is anybody, anybody on the council that feels differently, I would, I'd really like to hear. I mean, I.
And we have heard you two about.
I'd really like to hear both sides of things. So if there's any, anybody that, you know, feels differently, since we are the decision making board, uh, than, than some of the issues brought up, you know, either not.
I, I think, well, there's minor, it's not even minor. But, but I guess I feel like we have much required and we voted for what you managed to get forward and then things got mixed up and we had to hand it back over.
Just, just.
So now. And I thought, um, so now we're at another stage and I think we need to make a decision. I don't know, Pat, what about you?
Let me, let me respond to you. Just because we made one bad decision to approve something when we have false information, doesn't mean we should now make another bad decision when we pointed out reasons why to deny it.
You didn't, we brought that up at that.
I know I didn't because I dropped the ball. I, I admittedly admit to drop the ball on reviewing this fully at that first hearing. I, I, look, we get this stuff, I got, I picked this up two days ago.
Okay, well, let, let, let Scott.
Seven days in advance to a hearing, you're supposed to, you know, have a staff report. It was prepared, I'm not saying it wasn't. But we still get this, no, on Friday it was told, hey, it's ready for you to pick up. And I, I failed to get it over the weekend.
You asked for a vision. Now I'd like to, Scott, you did. It was really ten minutes ago.
I, okay, yeah, and the data shows, I'm not saying that, but I did not get it and it wasn't, I mean, we can, we got electronics, let's email it to me. I can start again then. I didn't, I know I dragged it up on Friday or whatever. And I'm not trying to knock stuff. I'm just saying, this is a whole lot more than I was expecting to review. And Ray also saying, oh yeah, I, you know, I'm not ready to make a decision on this. We need to make a decision whether it's for or against, based on the record and really good finding because this very well has gone past us to Luba on an appeal or not. Maybe, maybe the opposition doesn't have any. Well, absolutely.
Well, you know.
Wait, quiet until now.
Scott, what's your feeling?
My, my feeling on this is pretty simple. It's, if you think of the element of what's going on at this property, and this is a basic zone change. It's, as far as multifamily, there is multifamily in there. There's several duplexes in there. It is up to the borrowers to beat the code, to beat the square footage with their footprint. And that will be determined in planning. When you look at this, it's a basic central zone change. And that's why I feel a lot of this is in one proportion, a lot of this is being looked at differently because you're, you're adding the element of what may go on that piece of property.
I'm looking at the simple square footage and it doesn't seem appropriate.
Stop, stop. You're looking at the simple square footage, but it's not allowed to be beside.
Or so.
Wait a minute. That's the size of the plan, not this. This is a zoning change.
It's irresponsible to rezone something that doesn't meet square footage for desired use.
Well, that's, that's.
That's what the borrower.
I'm just telling you, I know, I hear what you're saying.
But we just read the criteria on this. We're looking at a zone change. It's up to us to decide if the zone change fits the area or not. There's multifamily in, does the zone change fit the area?
Where, can you tell people, I mean, I.
I can give you ideas, but I can take the area tomorrow and make sure the three fourplexes within two blocks of that.
I guess that's what I, I.
And they were, my grandfather called it in, it's.
They were.
It didn't go through.
Which, we said that, which I understand. But that's my problem is just because things weren't that cohesive in the past with our comprehensive plan. Why, I mean, what would you do now?
We're just going to give around circles, so.
That's why we have to, we have to follow it. And, and that's one of the things that was.
Which our problem, what you guys are dragging, what you guys are dragging in is the proposal, what may.
No, I'm not dragging.
So it's transportation.
I will not.
And access to services considering.
Yeah, what is your argument though?
I'm just saying three of them. The one about being in.
You're about one, one short term.
Well, it's a criteria, it's not. Go to the ones, three, four, on pages, uh, five, things, five, uh, you know, the findings for five that jumps on to six, um.
Read it, I love what they are.
No, she wanted to show excitement, just go to that page.
Wow, I'm sorry.
I already stated tons of testimony, you guys want to shut me up, I'll shut up. But I'm telling you the points that are, are wrong, that it isn't meant. This is the criteria we have to go by. I'm not making something up.
Darren, would you, tell me what kind of policy, by number, is it?
On page five of the staff.
Ten B four.
Yeah, three, yeah, ten B, three, four, five. I mean, most of the housing things should be thrown out, it can't be part of the criteria. We have no doc for that ordinance. I, again, this is applicant's staff report for, um, you know, we, we, three acres, I mean, all of this, I mean, we never threw out, I mean, they're not getting taxed on thirteen acres. Most people are getting taxed on twenty-nine acres. It says that it makes it more difficult because of the slope. That doesn't make it impossible, it, it's not something you can base it.
So, so what are you trying to?
Needs a basis on. What do you want to do?
What do you want to do? Do you want to vote? Do you want to?
Yeah, I think we need to, I'd like to hear your opinion on how these are right.
I just gave you my.
You think they're right because our hands are tied.
No.
Because there's other, other grandfather stuff that's not the course. We're not reviewing fourplexes and other.
It's for a few days inside, so how do we deal with it?
But this, these are the criteria I'm saying on.
We all have opinions, we have the right to disagree.
Well, and that's the.
How do you read that?
If I could try. We would like.
We can recess for five minutes. I'm not ready to review what I'm talking about. I've been ready to discuss this.
But not here, not just like. I said, I'm not ready to vote, I've been ready to discuss this one more, get more deeper into it. I have been went down and looked at property, one thing.
I think the applicant asked if we went, we all served to a live report. We shouldn't be going in depth about the property, it's not.
We're not looking.
You know, that's, that's.
The criteria.
Yeah, so we don't, we.
It's a matter of problem, you could be on the move, this is the criteria.
We don't know what they're going to do.
How about we all work together? Don't work, you can't, you can't take five. It doesn't matter, it doesn't matter if we disagree, you're all still working together. That would be your turn. We can disagree. Unfortunately, it's a waiting situation that has, that has to be considered. And I don't care how hungry, because my stomach is brown over here, but, um, how hungry everybody is, we need to make a decision or make a decision to have another day or whatever. Um, and I, I honestly, I, I would like to, to give the borrowers a decision one way or the other and, um, move forward or, you know, somewhere. So. If somebody, you know. You have a motion. Well, I, I'm.
So I think we should recess for five minutes so we can prepare a motion.
And well, I just wrote a motion.
To approve it?
No, I didn't say that. I moved to take a vote on application number seven, seven, six, to amend the comprehensive plan map and zoning map from a single family to multifamily volume.
Are you making a motion?
Yes. I said, you are actually, yeah. I said, I moved to.
If there's a second, I want to have a discussion before.
I'll say it.
Okay, discussion?
Clear?
A lot of discussion. So, again, whatever the decision is, it must be based on fact and only according to the rezone criteria, not, not a potential use. And the staff report as well, mostly may be regraded to exclude all that, whether this is a vote for or against, which I don't think anyone should be prepared unless it's, we're all good with how it is written. I mean, we'll make that motion, I guess. I mean, you made that motion in a second, but the staff report is really, you know. And again, I, I don't, I don't, I don't think we've fully, you know, uh, explored, raised, feeling on that. This is difficult to make a decision tonight after four hours of.
Well, you asked for a motion.
No, I was saying, do you?
Nobody wants to make a decision on anything else.
I asked. No, we have to be, discuss a recess so we can eloquently put, get into words very clearly because Sandy already took the time to write hers out much shorter than what I think.
So whatever the decision is, I think it's, we agree, at least two of us, not more than two, but then it needs to come back to the group, whatever the finding is. Because again, I don't want this group, whether this is approved or not, to have to go through a Luba remand hearing to, for adequate findings. It's, I've gone through a couple of Luba situations that it's a huge undertaking for staff who's about to retire, which is an absentee, but, but it's, it's difficult for us to then say, you know.
I ran out of ink in my pen.
Let's go ahead, you can call them, uh, vote.
I didn't. Maybe second sentence up too. Um, go with favor to approve it?
Aye.
Want to vote?
Aye.
That's up to me, huh?
You guys ready?
I'm a decision or I'm damned if I do and I'm damned if I don't. Or we said, yes, or we said, no. I know, but I'm just telling you. Either way I go, I'm going to have everybody in the world pissed off, but that doesn't matter.
Well, unfortunately, this position makes a lot of energy.
Yeah. So I'm going to, I'm going to have a vote yes on it, uh, from good. And I'm sorry, but. I want to see some housing in here.
On a seventy mile timer, the law.
Full.
So are you a yes or no?
You just said yes.
Yeah, yes.
So before we end this meeting.
You're working there.
Are you guys, are you, are you a stop? So, so what do you want the staff to present?
Guys, can I make a suggestion? I would suggest that I, that because we've got a guest vote, we will work, I and, um, Diddy will work on a set proposed findings for the ordinance and we will present that to you.
Present it to us because it should be reviewed. I mean, again, the majority has said approved.